Building or project that you see, you'll see that a skyscraper could go on two years' worth and all the work is below grade and you're like, are they ever going to build this thing? And then when they finally do get it out of the ground, it goes pretty quick. And spend a lot of time building a great foundation. And I would say the same is true for our AMI update. We promised when you authorized us to execute that agreement, we promised that we'd give you monthly updates. And every two weeks, I'm asking our team, well, what kind of update? And it's like, well, you know, right now, we're just signing purchase orders and all that. There's not a lot going on, Mike. But so I managed to scrape something out of them. We have signed some purchase orders. We're about $750,000 into purchase orders, mostly for water meters. So we've ordered all the water meters and we have spent an inordinate amount of time out in the field. I think Jamie has laid eyes on every non-residential water meter in the city to make sure we know how we're going to get it changed out and get our new AMI meter in there. And then there's all sorts of things, like we've completed the RNI, the Remote Network Interface. I don't know a lot about what that is, but they tell me it's the brains of the organization. So a lot of foundation work going on, a lot of activity. We, our contractor's been really good. They do weekly progress meetings. They, we're doing them by Zoom, online. And yeah, every time I join in, there's 20 other people onboard and they all know what's going on. I know that Dallas is also engaged a marketing firm. So the contractor that is performing this work has a pretty extensive marketing piece for our residents, so they'll feel comfortable when AMI does roll out. And then on top of that, we hired a marketing firm to coordinate with them. So we've been spending a lot of time on that. We think meters are going to start hitting the, beginning to roll out in September, September timeframe. So we plan on beginning doing our public education workshops in September and then we'll, the initial system will go live partially in October 2021. But between now and then, we're just going to continue to develop the informational piece that goes to our customers so that they're comfortable with this when we do go live. We have this, and I know y'all probably heard quite a bit about, there's a test board. In the day, the way they did AMI projects where they would put 100 meters out in the system somewhere and prove that they worked. But this is a big financial investment because getting those meters out there and standing up the network behind it was difficult. So current trend in doing that is putting in a test board, which we will keep forever. It'll become a training tool. That was delivered to our shop last Thursday. So there is some work that is starting to show itself above grade, but the real work really won't get started until much later in the fall when we start getting out in the field and replacing electric meters and replacing water meters. So just want to give a brief update, let you guys know that it's happening. Our completion date is May 2022. That is about five months later than we initially anticipated. And I hate to be another one of those guys, but it is our understanding that we cannot get meters released because COVID backlog, shipping backlogs, and also we're not going to see meters when we thought we were going to get meters. But we still got a great project. It's going to be the best project. We've actually, our consultants submitted a paper to, it's a nationwide conference. It's called Distributech and it'll be in Dallas this year. And they want to present the Newberry project at Distributech and talk about how small cities go about doing a smart meter, smart city deployment. We'll let you know if that, if we get accepted and then we'll bring that presentation to Newberry and show you what they're showing off about us.
Thank you, Mike. It's been a slow learning curve for me, but I've come to realize that the more you slow down, the better the project you get at the end. But I'm, so I'm always kind of holding myself back, but that sounds very exciting. Do we have any questions for Mike on that? Okay, and we'll move on to new item two, which is our power cost adjustment. Mike, can you just take us through what the adjustment is this month and also give us a little bit of context about why we do PCAs?
Mr. Mayor, in the wholesale power world, about two-thirds of every residence customer's power bill is the fuel that it costs to make the power. And I'm not talking about gasoline at pump. I'm talking about the fuel at a natural gas-fired power plant or at a coal plant or even nuclear fuel. And all of those are sold on a commodities market. And so no one can lock into a contract about what your fuel cost will be. During the course of any year, we see fuel costs vary from $55 a megawatt hour up to $160 a megawatt hour. And no one can, would be willing to take the risk to venture, guess what that would be? So that part of our bill floats on an open market. So we embed, we embed a certain amount, it's 72 mils that we embed in our base cost and, but power always costs more than that. It's just how much more than that. And so the power cost adjustment is the differential between what's embedded in our base rate and what it actually costs us for fuel. And within the city, we tend to smooth that out. As a rule, fuel cost, the cost for purchased power get higher in the summer when there's a great demand. And so we're using more than just the cheap power plants. We're using every power plant known. And so we see cost for power go from $55 a megawatt hour to 180 on the spot market, things of that nature. And our commission a couple of years ago asked, and that always happens in a hot month when there's high demand, you're using a lot of energy. So it was a double whammy for our customers. So our commissioners asked us to put together kind of a stabilization fund where during the peak months, when people are using a lot of energy, we could reduce our power cost adjustment and they would see a little bit of a benefit. And during the shoulder months, when it's, temperatures are just nice and you're not using your AC or your heater quite a bit and people's power consumption is low, then we will mark up power cost adjustment a little bit, fund the over collection so that we can help people out on their bills during the peak months. So we got a little bit of stabilization going in there and you can see that in the staff report. Dallas indicates that this month, we're recommending a power cost adjustment of .005, which, you know, former Mayor Conrad always says, if there's two zeros in front of your first number, that's a good thing. Power costs have been drifting. We're about 15% lower than we were even a decade ago. So power costs have been coming down because of the availability of natural gas in the United States. So this is a very competitive power cost adjustment. This is what we would consider to be a shoulder month. So we're over collecting now and hopefully in July and August and September, which are going to be peak months, we will recommend that we under collect and we take some of the money out of our stabilization fund to help hold people's rates down, their total energy bills down. So it's kind of a broad overview. There's some math behind it that we do in some of our presentations and be happy to share that with any of our elected officials if you want to sit down and really dig into the nitty-gritty of power power cost adjustment.
Thank you, Mike. I wish Central Florida had a power cost adjustment and a stabilization because you just, it's like Christmas time. You never know what you're going to get when you open up that bill. And sometimes you need a drink afterwards. So now that we pulled it off of the consent agenda, we need a motion to accept this month's PCA. I have a motion from Commissioner Martin, a second from Commissioner Clark. Any comments or questions on the motion on the floor to adopt this month's PCA at the rate, which I can't remember else. Thank you. Okay, hearing none. Audience have any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion passed unanimously. And that's going to take us to public announcements. Ladies and gentlemen, your commission loves to hear from you. We love that we've got you live back in the chamber. So we set aside this time at the beginning of every meeting to give you the opportunity to address the commission on something, anything that's not on the agenda. These are kind of the public service announcements. They're at two minutes. If what you are here to talk to the commission about is a little more controversial or you need a little more time to explain it, we also set another opportunity at the end of the meeting for five-minute public comments. So is anyone here live would like to address the commission at this point? Seeing none, we will move along to consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as was published? I have a motion from Commissioner Coleman, a second from Commissioner Maison. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion passed unanimously. And that'll take us to our first public hearing and ordinance, which item four is a petition to vacate a portion of Southwest Third Avenue from Southwest 252nd Street West to CSX Railroad. And I believe this is the second reading of this ordinance. So Scott, you want to go ahead and read the ordinance?
Happy to do that, Mr. Mayor.
While Mike figures out the technology?
Certainly. This ordinance 2021-23, an ordinance of the City of Newberry, Florida, vacating a portion of Southwest Third Avenue from Southwest 252th Street West to the CSX Railroad right-of-way, repealing all ordinances in conflict and providing an effective date. The appropriate motion is to pass ordinance 2021-23 upon reading by title only.
Since this is the second reading, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion before we get the presentation since we've all seen it already. I have a motion from Commissioner Martin, a second from Commissioner Maison. Do we, I'm, all the time I can't read.
We're good.
Ready?
It's a two-slide presentation.
And you got it in there.
She can advance it for me if we don't make the.
Okay.
He advanced us for him.
Give us the presentation then.
Mr. Mayor, this is the second reading. We received a petition from Mr. Billy Belts with 352 Construction asking us to vacate what we prefer to do as a paper right-of-way. It is, it was flatted once upon a time, no improvements were ever put there. It's between, it's a section of Southwest Third Avenue between Southwest 252nd Street and the railroad right-of-way. So it's just unapproved. If you arrive by now, you'd think it's part of someone's yard, but it's a city right-of-way and no one would be permitted to build facilities there. He asked, he petitioned to vacate it. We saw that there were no utilities in that right-of-way, nor are there any plans for utilities. We believe that there's no public benefit for the city to maintain that right-of-way and therefore staff were amended that we vacated. Ordinance 2021-23 was approved on first reading on April 26th. The staff were amended to be approved on second final reading.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Martin, a second by Commissioner Maison. Do you have any questions on second reading of this ordinance on the dials? Commissioner Farnsworth?
If it's vacated, what comes?
First, thank you. First day of all, when the government intends to vacate this right-of-way, it's what we have, and it can be what's going to happen and that goes to the vacant property. So in your case, half the day after a two, half the day after three, our two properties is probably the driver behind the right-of-way after that they can begin with. It's a great path, and it's just easy to navigate the sacred streets. But it does require action to do that. And then a part of the request, if it were authorized, if it were authorized to transfer the land on request, it's possible that it's going to be a fair, it's all filed into the company's center, but who are drawable will be, have to stand up a certain basis of, just one of the four in the company. I'm happy that you're there.
Are there any relevant, five, the relevant act two?
No. We're standing until the relevant.
Some time ago, I petitioned FDOT to acquire that parcel. It was for sale and because I thought that they could expand that retention basin when they do improvements on 2741 and on 26. I thought they would need the added capacity. They looked at it and said, no, they have ample capacity in their existing basin. So they said that there was no need. It's a nice piece of property. I think that he plans to build residential on it is my expectation. So it'd be a nice addition to the community. Infill, we like infill.
Any other questions on the dials? Does the public have any questions on the motion on the floor? Again, the motion is to accept staff's recommendation on second reading to vacate this parcel. Seeing no questions, I'll come back to the dials. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Motion passed unanimously. And that will take us to our first quasi judicial of the evening. This is between the City of Newberry and M3 Avalon Woods for mixed-use development. This is formerly Lexington Station. And we have a lot of quasi judicials and I actually have an update on the way we're going to do quasi judicials, one more iteration. But I will reiterate that I'm going to read the procedure once, as long as no one new enters the room. I'm not going to go through the procedures of the quasi judicial again. We will go, we will swear and we will do ex parte and I'll ask Scott to read each ordinance as we go. Again, ladies and gentlemen, when this board moves into quasi judicial, they stop being a legislative board and they become a judicial board. And so they are going to be governed by certain rules. I'm going to go through that procedure and those rules right now. When we get there, I'm going to ask the city attorney to read the ordinance or the resolution into the record. And we're going to explain the rules which concerns testimony. It's primarily that the substantial and competent evidence must be met when the board makes a decision. It shall state the following, and I quote, "All public testimony will be taken under oath. Everyone testifying will be subject to cross-examination. All documents and exhibits shall be entered into evidence and giving of opinion testimony is limited to experts. Closing arguments will be limited to the evidence of record." Basically, what that means is when this board is sitting as a judicial board, they can only take in evidence given to them by an expert. We're going to swear in and I would ask anyone that's here to speak to any of these quasi judicials tonight, and I think there are seven or eight of them, go ahead and stand up and we'll swear in everybody collectively. And then I'm going to ask for ex parte from the commission. So if you're here to speak to any of the quasi judicials tonight, five through 15, I think they're all quasi judicials, please stand right now and we'll get you sworn in. Madam Clerk, please.
These are about to be testimony about the trees.
Thank you so much. And we'll do ex parte individually. Does anyone have any ex parte to disclose on item five? Commissioner Coleman? Commissioner Clark? Commissioner Farnsworth? Commissioner Martin? Commissioner Maison? Okay, so the presentation that order that we will follow for each of these quasi judicials is that we're going to hear a brief staff overview on the subject, then the applicant is going to have the ability to make a presentation with no time limit, and then our staff will come back and give their report and recommendation, again with no time limit. I have not been contacted by anybody wishing to claim a third-party intervening or status, so that's going to move us to public comment. Anyone who's here to talk about any of these items, we've given three minutes to do so. Then the applicant will have the opportunity to cross-examine and then staff is going to have the opportunity to cross-examine. Then we'll come back to members of the decision-making body who threw the chair can ask questions of the staff, the applicant or any participants. Then we're going to hear final arguments from the applicant and staff related solely to the evidence and testimony presented at the hearing and introduced into the record. Then the attorney is going to advise decision-making bodies, it's applicable law and the factual findings that must be made to approve or deny the application. After that, deliberations will ensue for the application and then after deliberations, a vote will be taken to approve, approve with conditions, continue or deny the application. Now that's the procedure we're going to follow all night long. And I'd like to go ahead and begin for ordinance, I'm sorry, Development Order 21-10 with the staff overview now. Ms. Wendy, come on down.
Thank you. This is an application for a development agreement. So what we're looking at is an agreement that staff has been working with the developer to put together.
Hang on one second. I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt. Commissioner Maison has a question. He did have a conversation, Scott, with a neighboring, so we just need to convey that.
Yeah, it was watch, it was watch construction. As I was delivering, you know, they had some concerns about this neighboring development being put up. Would that be considered, I mean, like, do I need to disclose that now or?
That's the safest thing to do, Commissioner Maison, is to state what the conversation was.
Okay.
And then the question that I'll ask after you state what the conversation is, and if it's just an inquiry on, on what is this development, what's going on?
That's all it is.
Okay, then, and nothing in that conversation would affect your ability to be impartial to suit.
No.
We're good.
We're good.
We're good. Thank you, Ms. Wendy. You can pick up right where you left off.
Okay, let's go on to the next slide. So just an overview of this item. This is just about the property that's also the subject of an associated application for amending the mixed-use development Lexington Station. The property is located on the south side of Northwest 24th Avenue, on the east, just east of, yeah, I always do that with our, with the directions for some reason, but on the east side of State Road 45, surrounding Easton Newberry Sports Complex. So this application pretty much follows along to provide for the infrastructure improvements that are needed for that area and for that development, and it looks at design considerations as well. The purpose of that agreement is to establish the duration of the development, the agreement itself, phasing plan and items that are specific to the development. I'll just go ahead and let the applicant make their presentation and then conclude with our recommendation and.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wendy. Would the applicant like to come on down?
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We also have.
Will you state your name for the record for us?
Chris Botts with JB Broke. We also have the next item, which will postpone our presentation for after the next item because they both are intertwined together. And so we've tailored our presentation more towards the next item and not for the developers' agreement.
Okay, and you're willing to accept the risk by doing that?
We do.
We might not get to the next item.
That's understandable.
All right, thank you. Wendy, come on down.
Okay, and the development agreement has been separated out from the actual development order that's being looked at for this development because it is a separate agreement between the city and the developer and addresses the infrastructure improvements that are different and above and beyond that what's included in the mixed-use development for the amendments that are being proposed. So looking at the types of things that are in that agreement, pretty much the agreement would expire in 2036, has five phases of development. The developer agrees to reimburse the city for the cost of lift station generator, extend eight-inch gravity sewer line, that the city is going to provide pedestrian access from Easton to the development, and that the city will submit an application for a joint-use stormwater facility, sharing costs, and the developer will replace an existing four-inch force main with a six-inch force main. Also that a lift sta, the lift station pumps will be upsized if necessary. The developer will contribute $40,000 toward playground equipment for Easton Newberry Sports Complex. And the developer would reconstruct the driveway at Easton Newberry Sports Complex to city standards. Developer would also install a 10-foot-wide pedestrian bike path and that fences would be required and there'd be some design, decorative design features on two-story homes that might show up over the fence on Long State Road 45. Staff's recommendation to the planning and zoning board was for approval and they heard this application as a part of also the following item that you will hear on the mixed-use development for those amendments. But in this case, the application is for, recommendation is for approval by staff to approve that development agreement. And then once that development agreement, if that were to be approved on those kind of infrastructure improvements, then your next item, if you were to choose to approve that, that would have a development approval ordinance amending the old development order that was in place for Lexington Station. In that case, there'll be a reference and be incorporated by reference in that ordinance. So I'm just saying that this development agreement that you're looking at now is what you need to make a decision about and then that will be referenced in the next item.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wendy. Again, I've not been contacted, your, yes, up there. I've not been contacted by anybody wishing to claim third-party intervening or status, so that's going to move us to public comments. Is anyone here from the public who'd like to speak to this item? Seeing none, we will move on to, did the applicant hear anything in staff's recommendation that you'd like to cross-examine? Did staff, did you hear anything in the applicant's that you'd like to cross-examine? Okay, all right, members of the decision-making body, do we have any questions? Commissioner Farnsworth?
Okay, I'm kind of totally lost here. Explain to me exactly why we need this.
Are you talking to Wendy?
Yeah.
Come on down, Wendy. It's an expansive question. Give us your 30-second best summary of why we need this.
These are additional requirements that the city has worked, requirements that would be part of this agreement, that the city has worked out with the developer in order to make sure that certain infrastructure improvements are in place to accommodate the development, to make sure the capacity is taken care of when you think about concurrency and making sure that there's adequate water and sewer. Those things are in place through this agreement and shared expenses and responsibilities. It's a way that governments work with developers to provide these kinds of things to ensure that that's taken care of. In your development order, your development approval ordinance, that addresses things in your code already that are directly addressing the mixed-use development, planned development type of category. So those are certain conditions that are laid out already in your code. But by having a development agreement, you can have additional things that may allow you to increase your capacity maybe for neighboring developments as well and ensure that you're going to be able to handle all the development there. It's a standard process. I don't know if I'm explaining it well enough. We also have Brian Thomas, our director here, if you'd like to ask additional questions about that. They're primarily utilities-type of infrastructure that needs to be addressed.
Wendy, I think maybe the question is, there's a laundry list of things the developer's giving to the city. What's the city giving to the developer in this exchange?
Well, there are things where the, where the city will purchase something that's at a lower cost and so they can reimburse that. There's also the provision for certain access from Easton Newberry Sports Complex to the development itself. There's shared costs and there's also, there's a couple of pieces of property that the city owns that are included as a part of this overall development, but the city now owns them. They're still part of that mixed-use development, but they can still count those properties toward the requirements they need for mixed-use development zoning category. And it also allows the city to help with recreation responsibilities and requirements as well as drainage.
Don't go away, Wendy. Is there anything that we missed in that to answer the commissioner's question, Mike?
No, Mr. Mayor, I don't think so. I think to Wendy's point, that this developer has entitlements, he's got zoning entitlements and they're, they're ready to move forward with construction plan approval. And this is, this agreement just further stipulates some responsibilities, most of which the developer is providing things to the city that, that staff views as betterments. Wendy mentioned there's a 10-acre parcel. Y'all will recall that we purchased 10 acres at Easton for recreational facilities, probably been three years ago. That land was part of this development. And so this agreement enables this developer to use that 10 acres that we acquired for recreation as recreation and green space as part of their development. Otherwise, it would have really put them at a, at a disadvantage to try to meet that requirement when they have 10 acres less of property to deal with between when this was originally got zoning approval back in 2008-ish and today. The city acquired those 10 acres and, and it has, it kind of changed the nature of what they purchased. But it would have been green space and the city purchased it and it'll remain green space, so it seems to staff to be a very fair offering. And the developer, in order to make sure that, that the development is to the level that our commission would like, has agreed. We're doing some partnering on a lift station, which is better for the city. We'll have one lift station to maintain rather than two. We're getting some things out of it through some cost sharing, so that's a benefit to our ratepayers. There's a trail, a 10-foot-wide trail. Ever since I've started working here, the people in Newberry Oaks have wanted that sidewalk extended down to Northwest 24th. This developer's agreed to do it. They're going to propose some enhancements to the drive into Easton that staff finds to be really nice improvement, something that we probably wouldn't be able to afford to do for some time. So there's a number of changes and she's outlined them all, but generally, they're mutually beneficial, but certainly beneficial to the city, which is why staff supports them.
So will that 10 acres be developed the way we want it or?
It absolutely will be. You own it. It would just allow them to count it as green space towards their green space requirement. They're required to provide X acres of green space and they'll be able to count that 10 acres against it.
Do we have agreements with other developers of this nature?
Absolutely.
I can't recall something specific coming before the city.
Wendy, it'd be better if you could tell us more.
We have multiple types of agreements with. We have multiple types of agreements with, like Countryway.
Lexington Station's the last one that came through, isn't it?
Yeah. I mean, no new ones. I mean, at the moment, I don't know what's happening with new developments, but we, we have had several that you have already have agreements in place with various developments.
I think each of these developments is so specific to the need and the arrangement that while we have a lot of these developments, they don't look, none of them really look like the same development because they're all situational. The $40,000 playground equipment, 40,000, that's roughly Lois Fort Park Playground Station, I think that was. Now, that was about 10 years ago, so I'm sure it's gone up, but I think that was 35,000. So, you're in that kind of ballpark for the recreational. So, there's, there's a laundry list of things the city is getting out of this agreement.
You're getting the scratch bank?
That's coming next. Do we have any other questions from the dais, Commissioner?
I think it's.
Any other questions from the dais? Okay. We'll go to the applicant. Would you like to make a final argument? Okay. Wendy, would you like to make a final argument? Okay. Mr. Attorney, would you please advise the decision-making bodies, the book of law, factual findings?
Mr. Mayor, it'll be the same all the way through, which is the substantial incompetent evidence that you received from the podium, and it's defined under Florida law. Opinion testimony is given by the experts. We have a number of planners and engineers in the room right now, and they are the ones that are allowed under Florida law to give opinion testimony. A layperson is not.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll enter into deliberations. If there are no deliberations, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Approval conditions, continue or deny the applications.
Motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Clark to approve. I have a second from Commissioner Coleman. Any questions or comments from the dais on the motion on the floor, which is to approve LDR 21-10. Commissioner Martin.
Wendy, is there any sort of timeline that the applicant's been expressing?
For their development?
Yeah, more, I guess more towards the southern side than the northern side.
Well, they're, they're looking to keep going, no, but it does lay it out to 2036, and they do have its, a timeline in there, but it can change. So, I think they'd like to go as quickly as they could, if the market will allow.
Understood. Thanks.
Commissioner Mazan.
All right. I'm confused a little bit here. So, we just, we just agreed on an agreement with, and he just asked a question of breaking around, timeframe.
We have a whole other quasi judicial to go through.
There's a development, this is a development agreement. By statute, you have this provision for development agreements between local governments and the, so we did all that. Now, that's separate. So, now we go to, next item is the mixed-use development itself.
I guess you just threw me off when you asked that break-round deal, because I have questions before break-round.
Now.
We're going to go.
Well, potentially, ask the questions, and we'll tell you, that would be a better question.
Well, it was the whole, it was the whole neighbor, you know, commercial, next-door type question.
That'd be a good question now, if we can ask that question now.
That's what I would give.
Right. And the next one, we're going to be talking about what is allowed in that neighborhood, those kinds of things. So, now is, is, what is the agreement, what did we give them, or what did they give us before making this deal? Next one, we'll be talking about what goes in it, those kinds of things.
Clear.
So, but as commissioner, you're free to ask, even if it's slightly off-topic.
Listen.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from the dais? Do I have a motion from Commissioner Clark? I have a second from Commissioner Coleman. Any other questions on the motion on the floor from the dais? Okay, hearing none, we'll go to public questions on the motion on the floor. Do we have any questions from the public on the motion on the floor, which is to approve LDR 21-10?
DA.
DA, LDR, DA?
We are.
We are, yes. I'll get all the acronyms out next time. I was doing shorthand, my bad. I apologize. Hearing none, all those in favor, just by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. That will take us to item six on tonight's published agenda. This is about amending the mixed-use development, including renaming the development as Avalon Woods. We are in quasi judicial, no one new has entered, and we've all sworn in, so I'm going to ask for ex parte on ordinance 2021-14. Do I have anything down here, Commissioner Coleman, Commissioner Clark, Commissioner Farnsworth, Commissioner Martin, Commissioner Mazan, anything else other than that you've already disclosed? No? Okay. I have none as well. Again, I am a non-voting mayor. Okay, so that will take us to staff overview.
So, this application.
I'm sorry, we didn't read this in the ordinance yet. Scott.
Mr. Mayor, this is ordinance number 2021-14, LDR 2110, an ordinance of the City of Newbury, Florida, amending development order 20-02 pursuant to an ordinance 2020-21/LDR 2002 of the City of Newbury Land Development Regulations as amended pursuant to an application by the property owner to amend Lexington Station mixed-use MU development, renaming said development to Avalon Woods Mixed Use MU Development, providing for the development flexibility and amending the maximum permitted residential and non-residential uses on certain lands within the corporate limits of the City of Newbury, Florida, tax parcels number 01874-100-000, and tax parcel number 01874-200-000, tax parcel number 01874-001-000, and tax parcel number 01897-000-000, consisting of 196 acres more or less, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, and providing an effective date. Appropriate motion at appropriate time is to pass ordinance number 20-2021-14 upon its reading by Title only.
Thank you, Scott. That was two more parcel numbers than I was willing to read, so it's great you're here. Ms. Wendy, now the staff overview, please.
This application covers the same property that we just took a look at, and pretty much this is a, an application by the applicant itself to request that you amend the existing mixed-use development, which is Lexington Station, and they would rename it as Avalon Woods, which is already commonly known as. In addition, the kinds of changes that are looked at are increasing the allowable residential density and then reducing the non-residential density, the square footage that they're agreeing to. There's that separate development order, development agreement that would be referenced in your development ordinance, but only by reference. It's incorporated by reference only. And again, this is the location of the property on the east side of State Road 45 around Eastern Newbury Sports Complex and just south of Northwest 24th Avenue, Newbury Hills subdivision. I'm going to turn it over to the applicant for their presentation, and then I'll come back up and present staff's conclusion and recommendation.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chris Botts, I'm with JB Pro. I'm the Director of Engineering. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for taking the time tonight and the commission to review our request to amend the, the mixed-use development. As Ms. Wendy has already gone through, we have some proposed amendments to the current mixed-use development, and one being, we'd like to rename the development from Lexington Station to Avalon Woods. And through the presentation, we'll go through some of the requested amendments as well. Just through the presentation, just going to introduce the developer and owner, which most of you know very well so far, and just run through some of the amendments as well as the updated conceptual master plan for the development. Just go over a little bit about the developer's background. It's M3 Development. Dave McDaniel, who is, who is here this evening, and his brother, Peter McDaniel, are brothers, and they founded their development company in 2005, based in Orlando, and their bread and butter is residential developments like Oak Park and Newbury Corners, as well as the current phase of Avalon that's under construction. They are also the developers of the RV Resort that's going to be hopefully coming soon across the street. Just to go over some of the amendments that we're requesting, this is the updated master plan, which we'll come back to because I believe we'll probably get some questions regarding uses and locations of those uses. Again, we're requesting to change the name to Avalon Woods, and as Wendy mentioned, we are requesting to increase the residential density and reduce the non-residential density or commercial uses. With the, the reduced commercial use and the increased residential, we will actually be reducing the amount of traffic that State Road 45 will theoretically see from this development. We will have an increase in other uses as far as water and sewer, but as previously mentioned in the, the developer's agreement, we're working with the city on installing a lift station, which is actually under construction, as well as other infrastructure improvements. And as part of the agreement that the developer has with the city is using the Easton Sports Complex entrance as a connection to the development, and part of that, we're proposing to improve the entrance into Easton. As you can see on the screen, we're currently proposing right now a roundabout that'll give a more grandiose entrance into Easton, improve traffic flow between the developments as well as Easton itself. And one of those, we'll, we're working with Mike New and the city on signage improvements for Easton as well as our development. Along with that, we're proposing pedestrian connectivity up to 24th, utility improvements to Easton, as well as supporting the city with providing funds for improving the recreational facilities within Easton. So, it's just a quick overview of the amendments that we're proposing. Again, the infrastructure is in place, and we're actually proposing to reduce the amount of traffic that State Road 45 will see, and then we're providing buffering for some of the neighboring properties, as well as a mix of open space and mixed uses to meet the city LDR requirements. So, we request tonight that the commission approve our proposed amendments.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Wendy, will you come back up with staff report and recommendation?
So, essentially, on this property, it is increasing the overall dwelling units. The number from 440 goes up another 260. The actual, you can see the different types of units that are changing, but then when you look at the types of units, they can be interchanged. The non-residential. I knew you would say that. I knew it. Okay, so you've got the single-family detached, currently 214, and then they're proposing 350, so it's an addition of 136 of the single-family. The single-family attached, 106 is what's in the current development order, and then what's proposed is 150, so another 44. And then the multifamily, currently 120 is approved, and 200 is what is proposed, for another 80, so you've got a total of 260 units, with the hopes that the applicant is saying that, that the market will dictate what needs to be there so that they could be interchanged as needed, and then if the market didn't hold for that, then it wouldn't happen. But it does allow for them to do that one-to-one conversion to see what's, what people are wanting at that time. So, the next part is the non-residential amendments currently going, what's approved is a 249,750 square feet of retail and another 80,000 square feet of office. And what is being proposed is 210,000, so there's a decrease of 119,750 square feet. So, that will, helps to offset the traffic impacts and other impacts in the area. Additional changes that are requested are the minimum of the single-family lot size that would be reduced from 5,500 to 4,000 square feet, for that ability to go to that, and then to allow indoor and outdoor storage and mini warehouse uses to serve that area. The sidewalks, the sidewalks would only be required on one side of the street, that the applicant's requested. This gives you a look at the preliminary development plan as they've submitted with the types of land uses, which is hard to see. You have that in your packet as well, and then the applicant certainly can go over those individual uses if you want to look at those.
I don't see that paper.
That.
I don't see that.
That, you should have that in the applicant's supplemental, and also, a copy should be attached to your development ordinance itself, which is normally your first attachment to that app, that item.
Page 96.
In the backup. In the backup material. Yes, it's in your backup.
Not in our backup materials.
It's in the.
Email. Email.
Do you have any copies of that that we can just submit?
Do you?
Let's go make, let's just pause one second, make five copies, so each commissioner can look at that directly.
Do you want me to go ahead and at least, I can, I can talk about?
Go ahead.
Well, let's see if there's any other. Pretty much, the Planning and Zoning Board did recommend approval of staff's recommendation as, as presented to them, but they did make one recommendation that we work with the developer to change the language regarding the commercial uses that are allowed along highway frontage, meaning their discussion had to do with not wanting to have like the storage facilities and those kinds of things fronting on your main highway, so that's what people would see when driving by. So, what we did, we hadn't added in that development agreement, the development ordinance, there's a section there that says permitted principal uses and structures that's under the non-residential section, and that provides as indoor and outdoor storage and mini warehouse uses as an additional permitted use. And so, what we've added is that they would have to be located internally to the Avalon Woods mixed-use development, and that no such storage and many, or mini warehouse uses would be allowed along the highway. So, staff's recommendation is based on the information originally presented by the applicant in their justification report, and we find that the proposed amendments are consistent with the City of Newbury's Conference of Plan and recommend that the city commission approve ordinance 2021-14 for LDR 21-10 on first reading. So, if you have other questions on the preliminary development plan, we'll try to answer those, yeah, whatever you'd like, and the applicant can.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Wendy. Again, I've not been contacted by anybody wishing to claim a third-party intervening staff, so that's going to move us to public comments. If any member of the public is here to talk to this item, you'll be given three minutes to address the commission. Is anybody here who want to talk to the commission on this agenda item? Seeing none, we will go to cross-examination. Applicant, did you hear anything in the staff's presentation that you'd like to cross-examine? Okay. Ms. Wendy, did you hear anything in the applicant's cross-examination, in the applicant's presentation you'd like to cross-examine? All right, we'll move back to the board. Members of the decision-making body, through the chair, may ask questions. Anybody have any questions? Commissioner Clark?
Yeah. As you know, I'm all for, this has been a long road, I think, for the developer in this, it's been submitted a long, but I don't, why all of a sudden they back up on the size? I'm a proponent of larger lots in our buildings. I know you get more bang for, as a builder gets more bang for his buck, but I would like to see maybe a little more definition on this as far as these lots being subtracted from 5,500 to 4,000, and I don't see where the commercial changes much in the traffic situation, and it's always better to bring more jobs, so I'm not sure why we, I mean, I see it's proposed, I'm just asking the question. 5,500 down to 4,000, what are these, what are these houses? What's the size of? and it's always better to bring more jobs, so I'm not sure why we, I mean, I see it's proposed, I'm just asking the question. 5,500 down to 4,000, what are these, what are these houses? What's the size of these houses now?
Can you come up and tell, tell us a little bit about what does that, what does that do to my lot size?
Yeah. Thank you.
I'm Dave McDaniel, M3 Development. By the way, Commissioner Coleman, it's awfully good to see you. You look great. So the, what's happening throughout the state is, as affordability becomes more and more an issue, lot sizes are getting smaller. A 40-foot lot is, I've seen them developed all over Orange County over the last 30 years, actually, and they come and go on, based on the opinion of primarily the commissioners of the county or city. And in this case, what it's gonna do is it will provide an element of the market that needs a house that can't afford on the larger lot. So in our development, we have the right to do all 50-foot wide lots if we wanted to, and what we're doing is we're gonna have 40-foot wide lots, which will be the more affordable, but we'll also have 60-foot wide lots that'll allow for a three-car garage and larger house. Basically, the home size or home width is the common way the builders talk about them. So we'll have a 30-foot wide house for the, on the 40-foot lot, we'll have a 40-foot wide house on the 50-foot lot, and we'll have a 50-foot wide house on the 60-foot lot.
10-foot setback.
With a 5-foot setback on each side.
We changed that one, like.
We changed that a while ago, yeah, because there were some really unusual setbacks, like a 5-foot, I think it was a 9, 10-foot front yard setback, like, how do you park your car in the garage? But so, the answer is, is it's purely a matter of broadening the market and broadening the ability of different people who may not be able to afford, like, right now, I think in Oak Park, home prices have kind of escalated up to around 260 for a typical three-bedroom, two-bath home. When we started in Newbury Corners, they were around 230, and so we're hoping that by bringing the lot size down, we'd be able to deliver back in that 230,000 range, and just to expand the ability of more and more people to buy homes. One of the drivers for Newbury, as you all know, is that because the community is more cooperative and easier to get along with, if you drive just 10 minutes toward Gainesville, the exact same lot that I'm selling is 15 to $20,000 more for the lot, and 70 to $100,000 more for the home. So because of the restrictive nature of the development in Latrell County, under corporate a county, there are a whole bunch of people who just simply can't own a home, and I find that offensive, just because of a policy and that sort of thing. So that's what we're trying to do, is just broaden the base.
One more question, Dave. Does this, on these lot sizes that are being changed and the townhomes, apartments, I know this is a multi-year build-out all the way down, but is, does this affect what we're developing right now?
No. Well, it does in the sense that what's, yeah, like, for example, one of the things, there was a question about why developer's agreement, like, for example, in Oak Park, we made agreements to plant trees on the park so that in time, they would grow up and block the lights shining down on the people. We put a fence, but we put that in the homeowner's document rather than a developer's agreement. It was a very inelegant legal structure, but we did it, and it, you know, because we usually do what we say we're gonna do so far. We didn't need to have much more than that. We're at a point now where it's time, and we're perfectly comfortable with the agreement. But like, for example, there's gonna be a fence between the park area and the back lots of the homes, and likewise on 24th Street, there'll be a fence that will be put up by the builders to block the view of the neighbors across the street.
What I'm asking is, on your current development, which is on the north side of Easton, that's going great, is this change part of this, this square footage on the lots change?
Oh, no, we're, yeah, we already have 50-foot, we already have 50-foot lots, we won't be changing that.
And this'll go as you build out?
That's the future, it'll be the future stuff, yes.
Okay.
We're envisioning the smaller lots being on the far southern, southern side of the property.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Commissioner Coleman.
The only question I have is, we got a covered area, and I know this is probably went through the zoning board, but when they're at those tournaments shooting their bows, are you, y'all gonna make the embankments real high or?
It's a good question. We've spent.
That's the only thing that concerns.
I've spent countless hours working on that, so we're gonna begin by putting a three-foot berm, and I've forgotten the height of the fence, but a fence on top of the berm, so I think it's gonna be about 10 feet, so that in the event someone shoots straight across, it'll, it'll be, you know, stopped by a fence. But then, the gentleman who is the head of the Easton, I'm forgetting his name, but he's also a trainer, he also teaches, and he said, you know, I wanted to find out how far I could shoot a bow if I just shot it as far as I could go. He went out to a golf course up near where he lives in Atlanta, and he pulled it back and shot it away, and I think he got about 450 feet. We will not have any lots within a 650-foot range from the launch point of the, so the answer is.
Safety's good.
We're still working on that, that's the standard, is 650 feet, but I can tell you, you know, we all know, no matter what the real alley is, we'll never have a young mom buy one of those homes, anywhere near that. So we recognize the constraints that we have, and those are, I'll call them impaired lots, even though they're 650 feet away from the activity.
It's called excitement living.
Yeah, that's right.
The dog's wanting.
But we're gonna have these, we're gonna have kids probably like dodging them as they run through the backyards, but no, just kidding, sorry.
Commissioner Maison.
Going along the lines of safety, I don't know the dimensions of the, because you mentioned, you know, parking a car in the garage, I don't know how that's gonna get done, but I noticed over there across from Oakview, that, in my opinion, that's an unsafe that neighborhood, in my opinion, those cars are parked in front of the garage, and they're blocking the sidewalks.
So which, which development?
Oakview Village.
Oakview Village, okay. Yeah, so I, I've been involved in the land business since 1992. My father was a developer prior to that, and I have standards that, like, for example, front yard setback in Oak Park was shown as 15 feet on the original development order, and I made it 20 feet, because the best way to park a car is to give them 20 feet, so it's not blocking the sidewalk. So I just, I do certain things that aren't necessarily according to code, because I know it's gonna result in a product that people are gonna be happy to live in. So Oakfield Village was a development that happened without some of that oversight, and if I were doing it, it might have been done differently, but again, that's, I'm not critical of anyone doing what they do, and we have people who can live in a house right now because of that, so, you know, can't complain.
Commissioner Maison.
And what about the width of the streets? Because that's another thing over there.
We conform to the, to the city code, which I believe 24 feet of pavement, I believe 60 feet of rideaway? That's correct. So it's a 60-foot wide rideaway, 24 feet of pavement.
It's like.
I know out there, where I live at, Newbury Place is clean enough, but once again, across from the school, that's not enough. You can't park two cars and get through.
Yeah.
And just, just for the record, since we don't like to hold up one neighborhood and criticize, that neighborhood started out to be a completely different thing, and it kind of, it evolved, it evolved very quickly, and so that's where some of those oversight things didn't happen because of market forces and change, and the, that also changed administrator staff on our side while that was happening. So there's a whole lot of reasons why some of those things happened.
And on that point, when we were getting approvals for Newbury Corners, that discussion was made, we have language in the homeowner's association documents, you can only park on one side of the street, but nobody knows which side that is. I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry. It's in there, but, you know, again, it has to be enforced, and if it becomes a problem, we have a vehicle by which we can.
Don't apologize, that's the way the federal government does taxes, right? Just guess, just guess.
Fair enough.
Not to criticize the development, that's the only way I can relate. But you mentioned buffering earlier, so when this subdivision gets put up, you have, you know, businesses on the, I wanna say it's the south side of this subdivision, that already have, they work from like late nights to early mornings, and the concern is the noise, dealing with the residents there, the dust, the debris from the cement plants and all that stuff. Is there any buffering from that? Because they're already now getting concerned from citizens further up north.
There's 20 acres of commercial land that will be the first buffer between the commercial activities that are already there and the beginning of the residential activity. If you look on the map, there's a rectangular parcel that runs from.
Steps down.
The road that deadends into our property from the business park and then heading south. There's also, is it 20-foot buffer? There's a 20-foot buffer between the residential and commercial, and we'll put some plantings in there, and the commercial development will require their own planning, and so it is, it is a, it's a concern of ours. The code requirements are that you can't have dust flying from concrete plants, even though I'm sure it goes on right now. So undoubtedly, it will be something that will be more enforced as we have people who live nearby, but it is nonetheless something that's already on the books.
Any other questions, Commissioner Maison? Hang on, we got one. Commissioner Coleman, and then back to Commissioner Martin.
My biggest concern right here is State Road 41. Are we gonna, I mean, I know we deal with the same thing with the Northridge development here, on here. Is there any, anything to, I mean, there's gonna, that's a lot of people taking, this is, I mean, there's a lot of people coming in and out right there. I mean, is there, I guess that being state, that would be, wouldn't they like?
No, and they've, they've done their studies with FDOT to show the impact on State Road 41, and State Road 41 has an awful lot of capacity still left.
But they are, when we put in some turn lanes and some other shit.
Right, did you wanna?
They have it in there.
Yeah.
Commissioner Coleman, kind of answer your question a little bit. Yes, we are gonna be using the Easton entrance, but then also to the north of it, we have a entrance as well that is currently under construction, that we permitted with DOT, that DOT has come back and said we had to do some, a de-acceleration lane, which is a right turn lane into the development, as well as add a left turn lane. So we've gone through that process, at least for the current project that's under development, and again, we'll go through that same process with DOT to make sure that we provide adequate capacity and improvements that are necessary for the roadway.
The thing of it is, is it's still at top speed right here, right?
Correct.
Yes, yes.
55, 60?
55.
Okay, good.
Now, I know your concern is something like a traffic light or something like that, and, you know, the way DOT reviews it is, you have to have the warrant for the traffic signal, and actually, DOT is starting to go away from traffic signals, they wanna do other items, like a roundabout or some other traffic calming ideas, but based on our traffic count so far, a traffic light or the, or any of the other type of improvements aren't warranted in DOT's mind.
Okay. Commissioner Martin, and then Commissioner Farquhar.
Chris, I had two questions. I don't see where the office would be plotted in here, and I'm curious as to how the commercial is gonna be getting in and out, and is it going through the residential to get out onto the street?
By office, you're referring to just general office or the office use itself?
Yeah, I'm just kind of looking at the legend, I don't see where office is in the.
So with the mixed use, there's actually two criteria, there's a general commercial, which includes office, medical offices, just general stuff, and then a commercial intensive. So really, there isn't a category just for office by code, we're following under the general commercial, so that's why you don't see the, quote, office category, but we fall under, we have to have 5% of general office within our mixed use. So that could be office, medical office, you know, those sorts of things.
So I could see that potentially being maybe up towards the front, but what about the stuff in the back? How does that off, how does that commercial, how does that truck get out of there?
So you're referring to the section that we show on the southeast?
On the southwest corner?
Yes, that, we anticipate that that, they'll have, hey, their own access to State Road 45 for the whole commercial complex, and then the existing commercial park has a road stub, so we would tie that to that too, towards the southeast. So the commercial activities won't travel through the subdivision to get out, they'll have their own dedicated entrance in. At least that's our current plan.
Just so I can reflect back that I'm hearing right, so you're anticipating DOT giving you an access offset State Road 45, number one?
Correct.
And then there's the stub out in the back?
Correct. That goes through the existing commercial park.
Just mayor, from staff's perspective, I believe that there'd probably be one connection to, to the lots that are being developed residentially, that wouldn't preclude someone from doing that.
Correct.
It's just the circuitous nature of the roadway would mean it's not the, the option of choice. If you, if you're a UPS driver, you might not have to jump out on 2741 to make it to the next delivery, so we're trying to encourage traffic on our local streets instead of a local traffic, some guy deciding to go from here, right next door, not jumping out on the state highway, but being able to stay within the interconnectivity while not encouraging all the main traffic to go through that same corridor.
Manager, manager New is correct. We'd want interconnectivity, city staff will want us to have interconnectivity, and then also the idea is that you have the work and live home close together, so if, you know, any of those homeowners do work in the commercial complex, it's, you know, hopefully they would choose a more eco-friendly mode of transportation, but we know everybody's just gonna use their car, but, so. Does that answer your questions? Commissioner Martin?
Commissioner Martin. You yield your, you still have more questions.
I'm kind of at my threshold with the residential, to be honest with you. I don't want to deny it, but I'd like to, I don't know, we gotta scale it back a little bit for my, for my particular appetite, but I'm, I mean, I'm hoping that we could come to some sort of, kind of an agreement, because the signaling that we're getting from the school board is not optimistic at all about, and I, I just don't want to create a storm that the next commission is dealing with a little bit further down the road. So if, at risk of it getting jettisoned tonight, I don't know if there's an appetite to kind of go back to the drawing board to find something that's a little more palatable for me, but that's for discussion for everybody else, I guess.
Commissioner Farquhar's next. Commissioner Farquhar?
Yeah. First, we have, I have several problems with this, the, first, the decrease in the minimum lot size, not in favor of at all, the change from retail to commercial, not in favor, the decrease in the minimum average for the acreage provided from cutting it in half, I'm not in favor of that at all. I see in the proposal to go to sidewalk on one side of the street, I don't. Uh, I see in the uh, proposal to go to sidewalk on one side of the street, I, I don't agree with that either. Uh, I mean, I see the, the argument of, of lowering the traffic is, is very weak one. So I, I see no real benefit for the city. And Commissioner Martin did point out the, the school board issue, the school issue, so I mean, I'm not in agreement with this proposal at all, so.
Commissioner Clark? Hang on one second, Commissioner Clark first.
Yeah, cause I had this, what I was saying, when we had this one-to-one uh, use conversion, as time goes on, if the house and market dips and you see a potentially for uptick in commercials, it's gonna be able to, it says it here, but can we look at building commercial bigger if somebody comes in? Are you able to take some of this land if somebody big wanted some? And use this for commercial or is this basically as a subdivision set, we're done?
So with that, we, with the, the densities that we're proposing is the maximum that we're allowed. Um, as far as the acreage goes, the code has a minimum, but not a maximum. So we would be tied to the maximum density of square footage, but not from an acreage standpoint. To uh, answer one of Commissioner Farnsworth's questions, he has some reservations about reducing the retail. Well, the LDRs don't have a category for retail, that's general commercial. So we're cleaning this up to meet the current LDR requirement. So general commercial is retail, office, those sorts of categories. There isn't a specific retail category in the land development code. So general commercial allows you to basically have a broad range to meet whatever the demand is at that time. Um, so we're not really reducing, we're reducing the overall square footage, but we're not eliminating retail from the development, we're just meeting what the language in the LDR states for that use.
And Gray, am I correct, I just wanna clarify, our LDRs only require a sidewalk on one side. Is that right?
That'll be a question for.
Mike, or Wendy, who would be able to answer that? Cause this, this development is kind of unique. And that, I just wanna make sure we're holding everybody to the same standard. Anybody, flip a coin.
Uh, Commissioner Mayor, Brian Thomas, Plank Director. In general, you're correct that the LDRs only require sidewalks on one side of a street during, in most of our subdivisions. In the mixed use category, there was, in the existing development order for this development, there was a requirement that on the main boulevard, not on the side roads, but on the main boulevard, that both sides of the street were, had sidewalks. So that's, that's, the only difference is on the main drag, going from two to one. The others peripheral to that already only.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I had that in my head, right? Okay, Commissioner Clark, were you yielding the floor? Commissioner Maison, I had a hand, no? Okay, other questions, thoughts from the dais? Go ahead, Commissioner Farnsworth. And we're not, we're not at deliberations yet, so there will be a chance for you guys to just talk. Right, okay, any other questions for the applicant or for staff?
I guess just the one question with the commission is what specifically, Commissioner Martin, what is your comfort level on the residential? We understand the, the school board is making her rounds, superintendent has is.
Yeah, and it's not even so much the superintendent, so much as the people that she works for. And this, I mean, this is just kind of the place we're at, both, both of us, you developers and us. And uh, you know, like I said, I'm just kinda bumping up towards my, my threshold of tolerance. Cause you guys aren't the ones that are gonna get the phone calls and you don't, the ones that answer to the, to the people, we do. Uh, so uh, I'm not really sure to answer your question. But you know, we can have individual conversations with staff. Cause I, I'm not really, I'm not really sure what, what would be okay. Cause I, I mean, it, it bothers me to, to restrict somebody from being able to do with their property what they wanna do with their, with their property. Uh, but we are fiduciaries of the, you know, of the people and what they, what we can do. Uh, so, I mean, I just, I don't know, we're just gonna have, maybe just have another conversation.
We're getting, we're getting a little bit outside the process of quasi judicial right now, so I'm, I'm just gonna bring it back to the dais asking questions of applicant or staff at this point and then in deliberations. Maybe we can have some of those, that open conversation. Any more questions that we need clarity on before we get to deliberations? Okay, um, then we will hear final arguments. Would the applicant like to make a final argument? I think you've had a sort of a precursor of some of those deliberations.
Um, one additional item I'd just like to throw out, I know um, you know, commercial and non-residential is kind of a big component recently for the city wanting to bring in jobs and, and those sort of things. But um, one item to note is the National Builders Association has um, kind of issued some documentation that on an average single family house that is built, it creates about three jobs for an area. So um, yes, there are other impacts of residential developments, but also increasing and creating jobs is one benefit of residential developments. And we do understand and we knew um, eventually the school situation would slowly come to head. But I know the developer has had conversations with the, the mayor and is working on ways to, to hopefully alleviate those concerns with.
Mr. Mayor, I got one more. Okay.
Do you have anything else?
Yeah, just before we quit, or before we leave.
That's, that's all I have.
Okay, okay, one final, we're gonna move back into quasi, one last question.
My question would be for on the developer getting, I know right now we're in a crazy building situation. Getting people, getting help, contractors. As this is a fifteen to twenty-year buildout, is there, I know what this question's been asking, but I just don't remember. Is there a plan to use local builders, plumbers, electricians, or is this stuff national? And it just comes through on the buildout?
From the site construction standpoint, um, we are using local. As far as the home builders go, they are a national company. So where their workers come from is different?
Is it different?
So while we call them national builders, they still have to use local trades. And so we, like for example, our site contractor also does all the site prep for one of the builders. Uh, there's a local plumber who does all the plumbing for one of the builders. And uh, I know there was a time years ago, like within the last three or four years, where they could not get the trades to do the job they needed done and so they were pulling guys in from Jacksonville and Ocala. You can't get those guys to make that drive anymore. So the answer is, is, is most all of the work is being done by local professional, local trades, so.
Thank you. And I'm gonna remind the, the dais, our YouTube watchers are really depending on you guys to turn your mics on when you talk. So if, if you have a question or a comment, make sure you get the mic on. Brian, are you gonna make staff's final argument?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to address one of the issues that was brought up that um, is coming up more and more frequently and that's the, the issue of the commercial. And in the case of this, this development, a bit of a reduction in the commercial. Right now, Newberry has a number of projects that are, that are falling under the mixed use category. They're planned developments that have a mixed use component or actual mixed use like this one. And in staff's mind, it makes sense to have a bit of a reduction in commercial in this particular development because it's not really located in a prime location for commercial development. The prime location, of course, as you're all aware of, is along Newberry Road. That's going to attract all of those businesses that need very uh, visual frontage, that need, you know, the maximum number of trips, the greatest amount of frontage, the, the highest profile. The businesses that they'll be able to attract to this location are gonna be less than that because you do have lower traffic counts. You, you don't have that main thoroughfare for everybody in Dixie, Levy and Gilchrist Counties that are heading home every day. And so it's gonna be a more limited pool of commercial tenants that they're going to be seeking uh, to work with. And so for this particular development, we actually think it does make sense. And along with that, we do have a number of developments that are gonna have those components, the ARC, a couple of new developments that are under preliminary review right now. And so um, there's also a threshold, a such thing is too much of a good thing, that we don't wanna cross over because we don't wanna have too much commercial vacant land and too much, or even worse, commercial vacant buildings. And so um, for that reason, I think for this particular development, it does make sense to scale back on the commercial side a little bit because it's a limited market that's going to want to locate in this particular location. But we do need the, we need it there because we need a buffer between the residential and the heavier industrial further to the south.
Zach, can you clear your final argument?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Attorney, would you please advise decision-making bodies applicable law and factual findings?
Substantial and competent evidence, Mr. Mayor.
We're getting that down, I appreciate it. Okay, uh, boy, we're gonna come back for deliberations. Now, this is the time where we get a chance to just talk openly in an orderly fashion about some of those concerns that we were getting into our questions. Uh, you know, you've heard from both sides here about affordable housing and what the market will bear. Uh, you have decisions to make about how much commercial is enough commercial, how much is too much. Um, you know, I would also remind you guys that it's uh, you know, it's difficult. But we don't have a lot of developments going north and south. We have a whole lot of people who wanna put neighborhoods all up and down Newberry Road. But we don't have a lot going north and south. Uh, and the north and south developments, those are people who come to the light and have the opportunity to turn both ways. Every neighborhood development put on Newberry Road, those people come out and they turn left and go back to Jonesville or Gainesville. So uh, when we think about rooftops and housings and those kinds of things, just wanna keep that twenty thousand picture in your forefront because you're gonna get a whole lot of people asking for neighborhoods down Newberry Road. This, a little bit more unique in that, in that way. Floor, Commissioner Clark?
Mr. Mayor, um, to Commissioner Martin's uh, point on the school, but um, we do have to be overview of what we're doing, but the school board can't limit us either as we grow. One of the things they need to do is understand that we are growing, so they need to follow with us. So that's just a point, but um, there's been a lot of money spent here, there's been a lot of time spent here. And uh, some of the limitations have went back and forth, but just, I'm just telling you that this ain't the time to stop a project this big that's already pulled the trigger on, in my eyes, so.
Can, can I pause before we enter it, continue with the deliberations, I wanna ask a question here. Because thi- this has come up in quasi judicial numerous times and it has been concerning me because this board is sitting as a judicial board. They can only make incision based on the evidence that's presented to them. And we have not, no evidence presented to us today that the schools can't handle. So how do we deal with that? We, we've got a lot of comments up here about, well, we're worried about some potential hypothetical future that maybe the school board can't do things. But we're in a sitting as a judicial board. And the, this school board has not come and presented to us and said, you know, we can't, and this development has been on the books since two thousand and eight. So I'm not sure exactly how much time the school board needs to make these decisions. Uh, that's, I don't know, thirteen years, so I mean, that's, that seems like a reasonable amount of notice. So how do we deal with quasi judicial and this kinda crystal ball issue that we have with the school board?
Mr. Mayor, I think the more pertinent question is the intensity and density that is being outlined here. Uh, the school board's side of it, this development and future developments are gonna meet the, have to meet the concurrency that the school board sets forth. But um, certainly the commissioners can look at the intensity issues that this development is engendering and look at the lot sizes and, and what is before them and make a determination on the surrounding areas and whether this is a subdivision which meets the requisites of, in their minds, that uh, allows for the intensity that would be appropriate. So I think that's really the inquiry that, that is really before them this evening.
And the developer understands that problem. So this board makes its decisions based on the evidence that's presented to us. The developer is at risk if five years from now, the school board says there's no capacity, then they stop building. So to that point, I, and it's kinda the point that I have tried very inarticulately to make, but I think Commissioner Clark just made it, we make decisions based on the evidence presented to us. School board has to make their own decisions based on their evidence and sometimes they cross, sometimes they align. But we can't, we have to stay in our lane. So, okay, we'll go back to deliberations, Commissioner Maison? Couldn't remember who is, I saw two hands go up. Commissioner Maison?
All right, well, I um, after the chat, the conversation on other developments in uh, in Newberry, I made a phone call to uh, I'm not gonna mention any names, uh, someone on the uh, school board, board.
Hang on one second, Commissioner Maison, cause we're in a quasi judicial and you're bringing in a conversation outside that wasn't presented here. So I just wanna make sure, if what, if what the commissioner's about to say is gonna determine his decision, is that something we need to disclose? I know you don't wanna say a name, but if that's, if that's driving your decision, it's not presented here. It's like if you're sitting in a court and someone said, well, I talked to an eyewitness. I can't tell you who it was, but that person said, that's the, right, so.
That's right, that's right, you need to disclose the, the conversation and that's what.
Oh, that's fine, so names it on?
If, if, if it's gonna influence the decision that you're about to make, then you have to explain why it's influencing the decision you're about to make. And why it's influencing since it wasn't presented here in front of everybody.
Okay, well, um, I wanna say this, the school board, they came here at one point and they, they did the stats as far as how many kids per house were gonna be affected, you know, and all this. And so I ended up making a phone call after that conversation that we had and said, okay, just hypothetically, if you'd have put a, a, a timeframe on us, because when I drive in through High Springs, through Alachua, they ain't stopping. They're still building. I don't know what their, what their whole timeframe is there and years and all that stuff, but they're still building. And so I was told, well, you know, it's a new board. But, and this is all, you know, a year, year and a half before they come to a, possibly come to a conclusion. And then I just added another year and a half on top of that. And if you add another year and a half on top of that, there's no reason why, but at that time, something can't be done for us to start building houses again. So if you look at the evidence there, that's about what, five, six years? So when are we, when are we planning on breaking ground on this? Five years, six years? I mean, if it's, if we can say, hey, don't start breaking ground for five, six years?
They already started on.
On the one, yeah, phase one.
As a phase buildout, this will get big, you know, as it gets a fifteen-year.
You might, hang on one, so the conversation is for the folks watching at home who may have missed that part. Commissioner Maison is making the point that we are, let's just say, three to five years away from these things. School board, on top of knowing this development was on the books since two thousand and eight, is now hereby in this public meeting, giving notice that they've got three to five years on this development, on this and other phases. So, and Commissioner Clark was just making sure that timeline was.
I was just reiterating, now that's what the, the evidence says and it's on here that we're gonna build out over fifteen years, is that correct? So, so this, this all don't happen overnight, it's as a future plan.
Clearly, since it started in two thousand and eight.
Right, and, and a lot of money and time has been dedicated to this.
Commissioner Maison, you still have the floor.
So good.
You yield the floor. Other deliberations, Commissioner Farnsworth?
Uh, a couple things, um, you know, I don't care about the school board that much either, about making, whatever. Uh, but as far as, as Commissioner Clark pointed out, they, these people have spent a lot of money in it. And they have, and we're not stopping them from developing. it, and they have, and we're not stopping them from developing it, but they changed their proposal midstream here so they could still develop it under the old proposal. And I also think that whenever they come up here and they talk about how much more expensive it is to build in Gainesville, and it's much easier over here in Newberry to deal with the zoning board and the commission, and that's true, but I don't want us being taken advantage of in this situation either. I think we need to keep an eye on what is best for the citizens of Newberry, not what's best for the developer. So they have spent a lot of money, but they're going to be making a lot of money, and that's not, that's not something we need to put on our citizens.
Commissioner Maison?
Yeah. So how affordable are all these houses, that being said?
Hang on one second. We're not in, we're not a question and answer yet.
Are they in deliberation?
Well, now we're in deliberations. The Oak Park, I heard, was 260. Now, are we in that range there? A little below that. A little below that. Right. You know, it's difficult to know markets. They go up, they go down. I mean, I'm sure that when they first approved this in 2008, they were probably saying it's going to be three to five years till we break ground back then. Then the market crashed. Here we are 13 years later, we're back on track. So, and with all of these developments, when we talk about 20-year buildout, that's at the steady growth that's happening today, which I'm sure everybody, you know, hopes that that continues, but if history is a teacher, we know that it goes up and it goes down, and when it goes down, nothing happens. I take Commissioner Farnsworth's words. I don't disagree with not one single word he just uttered. I agree with every single piece of it. And I, but I would say that where we need those, I won't say higher standards, but where we want to think about maybe changing it is on the new developments that come in, the developments on 26, maybe doing an overlay. I know we've kind of briefly talked about that, where we encourage those upscale, you know, developments in certain areas. You know, I think that area town is, has already been sort of designated kind of affordable area that we'd like to encourage that kind of growth. So I take his comments to heart. I just think we need to be a little bit more strategic with where we want those, you know, different levels of developments to go. Commissioner Clark.
I think, Mr. Mayor, this is where the board and us as the board need to work with staff, and this is the time. These L D Rs are set in place, and builders are going to take advantage of what's given to them. They're here. These were developed, these were set by some commission, by the staff at some point in time, and this developer's taking advantage and doing exactly to our L D Rs, and there's nothing to be, you know, you can't take nothing away from that. I think now is the time for the future, if we're talking about L D Rs and the size of subdivisions and the size of lots that we're talking about, wanting bigger and better, then this is the time that we need to start thinking about this and change these L D Rs for the future subdivisions that you're talking about. When they come in, we have the bigger homes, the bigger lots, and if they're going to afford them somewhere else, they can afford them here also. So this is on this particular one. I understand we've taken away here. You know, there's 55. I like that, and we're down to 4,000. So, I mean, is there a way to come into a happy medium with the developer? Is there a, can we, as a board, can we table this and then come back and talk about it with staff and the rest? Or is this a, we have to make a decision right now? Do we want to kill a project like this?
Scott.
Mr. Mayor, you can approve it, approve it with conditions. You can table it to a date certain in the future. That's something that you're allowed to do, or you can deny it. The approval or the denial has to be with substantial incompetent evidence. In other words, you need to, if you were to approve it, I think it's pretty easy to set forth the approval part of it. If you were to deny it, you would need to set forth why you're denying it specifically based upon the testimony that's come from the podium tonight. But you are able to continue it to a date certain in the future. That's fine.
The only caveat I would put on what Scott just said is if it conforms to the L D Rs, then what is the substantial incompetent evidence that you're basing the denial on? Because if staff recommends it, it more in line with our, what's happening right now, it's in line with the L D Rs, then we can't hold one developer to one set of rules and another developer to another. That's your point of, it's in the L D Rs. So, and all of these conversations, I think, are excellent conversations to have when someone brand new comes in here and says, "I want to build a totally new development in some other area." Unfortunately for this board, everything just about that we've been dealing with has been on the books. You know, and Commissioner Farnsworth is right. They are asking to change the original agreement, so that's a fair point. But then you also take in staff's point that what, the changes that they're asking are more in line with the L D Rs. So, and this is also first reading, so the developers listen to this conversation, we listen to the conversation. You know, you can always advance it, saying, you know, I'm not guaranteeing I'm voting yes on the second one, but I'm going to give everybody a couple of weeks to see what we can, see if we can change anything. Further deliberations? Commissioner Clark.
I, kind of expanding what I was saying earlier, I'll, I don't mind moving forward with it on first reading at this point. I want it to be financially feasible for the developer, and I don't want to do something on the fly because I don't want to put the developer on the spot one way or the other. I respect everything that M3 has done here in our community and what they will be doing here in our community. So I have all the, I don't want that to get lost in the mix here or anything like that.
Thank you. Any other deliberations? If there are no deliberations, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Approve with conditions, continue or deny. Have a motion from Commissioner Coleman to approve. Is that Commissioner Coleman down there? To approve?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Clark. Okay, I have a motion properly seconded on the floor. Commissioner Coleman made a motion, Commissioner Clark made the second. Conversation on the motion on the floor from the dais.
On the second, would there be, as a second, and I've never done this before, so is this the time I second it? Is there a condition, or can you put a condition or not?
His motion is to approve. So if you second it, you second the motion to approve. Now, when we come back for second reading, you can say, "Look, I moved you forward that time, but there were some things I was still thinking about, right, and I didn't see them." Again, I just ask everybody to remember, in quasi judicial, you got to have a reason. That reason has to be based on the evidence that somebody standing right there...
Yes.
...who is evidential, right, who has expertise, gave us to say...
It's first reading, I second it.
No. Okay. Any questions, comments on the dais, on the motion on the floor? Public questions or comments on the motion on the floor? Seeing none, do a roll call vote. Commissioner Coleman?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Farnsworth?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Maison?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one with Commissioner Farnsworth in dissent. Have you got me right there before I finish my sentence? Yeah. Okay?
Mr. Mayor, just before we move on to the next item, if there's anything that the commission would like the staff to work on, one of the developers here will be glad to work on that. If you don't, can't think of it right now, but if you'll email me, text me, or call me, we want to present development for consideration that you guys will find approval, that you have tasked us with being that community, and you tell us what you need to see changed. We're going to do our level best to get it back to you with a unanimous vote for approval.
And I would say, guys, that we're in the middle of this visioning session, and so, you know, 10 years ago, you couldn't get anybody to build anything in the city of Newberry. Nothing was happening. Now we got a lot of folks and a lot of developments, so to commit the point that Commissioner Clark has made, that's why we're doing the visioning session, that's why we're having these conversations about our L D Rs, but it's, in my view, it's not fair to hold people accountable to L D Rs that we haven't written yet. We got to go, we got to do the L D Rs first, but that's why I think we can say to people who are asking us about new developments, hang on, wait for the visioning session to be done, you know, wait for us to have these kind of conversations. Okay, we're going to move on to item seven. Now, I have one change to our quasi judicial procedures. Thank you, gentlemen.
What we say?
We have ascertained, after long and productive conversation, that when we have quasi judicials that are built upon each other, we're going to go through the procedure one time. We'll still need to read the ordinance separately, but after we go through the procedure one time, then we will just read the ordinance and we'll take a motion. So if we're changing, you know, annexations from county ag to our ag, we won't go through the whole quasi judicial. We'll do it that first time, then we'll just read the ordinance, we'll take a motion. So with that, we're going to lump seven and eight together. We'll do the quasi judicial on seven, then Scott will read the ordinance for eight, and we'll just have a motion on that since they are combined theoretically. So with that, I've already read the procedure. Scott, would you read the ordinance and the record for us?
Happy to do so, Mr. Mayor. This is ordinance number 21-06, CPA 21-02, an ordinance of the City of Newberry, Florida. Amending ordinance number 4-91 is amended relating to an amendment of the future land use plan map of the City of Newberry Conference of Plan under the expedited amendment procedures established in sections 163.31842 and 3 Florida statutes and in conformance with sections 163.3161 through 163.3215 of the Florida statutes, providing for a change in future land use classification from agriculture less than or equal to one dwelling unit per five acres to planned development on certain lands within the corporate limits of the City of Newberry, Florida, tax parcels number 01927-000-000, 01932-000-000, and 01933-002-000, consisting of approximately 289 acres, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, and providing effective date. The appropriate motion at the appropriate time is to pass ordinance number 2021-06 as read by title only.
Thank you, Scott. Let's go ahead and do ex parte. Commissioner Coleman, you have anything on this?
No.
Commissioner Clark?
No.
Commissioner Farnsworth?
No.
Commissioner Martin?
Commissioner.
Commissioner Maison? Okay, I have none either. Wendy, will you give us? I'm glad we can laugh about it. I'm glad we've got to that point. Okay, Commissioner Coleman was just saying he hasn't had any ex parte with anybody because he's been in a...
Well, that's one way to keep yourself humble.
That's right. Once it gets nine o'clock, we get a little loopy, so Wendy, give us a brief overview.
So the applications before you are two. One is to change your land use map, and one is to change the zoning atlas. The location of the property is on the south side of West Newberry Road, across from the Equestrian Center. It's about 289 acres. It's just the three parcels. This is the first step in changing land use and zoning to allow it for development. The first step is to change your future land use map. This is the second public hearing before you. This item already went to the state after your first public hearing for their review. So this shows you a location of the property. It is an application that C H W has provided for you to change from agriculture to planned development, future land use category. The site is within the urban service area at the gateway of City of Newberry on the eastern side. It does have a planned development designation is what they're requesting, and that does allow for residential, recreation, public, and commercial uses, and the proposed future land use classification is consistent with your comprehensive plan. So, and it did get sent to the state for their review, and the state's expedited review process revealed no comments or anything that had to be addressed from the different agencies that you have those comments in the packets. And the next process goes on to the zoning application. I might, I'll just go ahead and go through that, and then the applicant can go ahead and address that. The next process is just to change the zoning itself. This is the second public hearing. Remember that changing the zoning is contingent upon your plan amendment, so your future land use designation has to be correct for the zoning to implement that category. Again, same location, going from agriculture to planned development zoning district, so it's the same property, everything's the same. The type of development, 55-plus, single-family detached subdivision with supportive neighborhood-scale commercial uses. It does have a total maximum of 900 single-family homes, remember, therefore 55 and over age, looking at a 20-year period for buildout. 70,000 square feet of, sorry about that, went too fast, 70,000 square feet of neighborhood-scale non-residential uses. And I'll leave it at that and let the applicant address any of their presentation first.
Thank you. Wendy, applicant, would you like to give your presentation? You have no time limit. Of course, you don't have to use...
I was just waiting for nine o'clock. I would never comment on an invocation, but it is so great to see you back. Yeah, I've heard, I'm on the airport authority board with Mr. Conrad, and been kind of getting the pulse of things, no pun intended, but glad you're back. No, we're really happy to be here. We don't have much to say tonight. We'll keep it short and sweet, and that's it. This went to the state of Florida. The Department of Economic Opportunity reviewed it, so the Department of Transportation, Department of Education, Environmental Protection reviewed it, comes back with a clean report, so we hope you will support this. It is no problem with the school board because 55 and above, and I hate to say it, but I would qualify for that. I'm just not going there yet. So we appreciate your support on this, as you passed it earlier.
All right. Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Ms. Wendy, you want to come back up and give us anything else we need to know along with your recommendation?
The only thing you need to know is that the Planning and Zoning Board did recommend to you approval, and the state has no issue, and staff continues to recommend approval of the application, and the recommendation is to approve. We've got both motions up there, just to approve the first ordinance on second reading and the second ordinance, which is dependent upon the plan amendment approval. So you've got both the comprehensive plan amendment and the rezoning motions there.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, once more time, I've not been contacted by anybody wishing to claim third-party intervention. Staff, that's going to move us to public comment. Any member of the public wishing to comment on this item? We have three minutes to do so. Anybody? Seeing none, we will move right along. Did the applicant hear anything that you'd like to cross-examine in staff report? Ms. Wendy, did you hear anything an applicant that you'd like to cross-examine? Tell him he does not look like he's 55 or older. Not without great hair there. Okay, we'll come back to members of the cities making body. Commissioner Coleman?
I just got one. It's 900 homes.
Over 20 years. Over 20 years.
I just really directed the mic. The sewage plant. I, I'm sure it's...
Yeah, it's kind of crap. We, Mr. Mayor, we actually did have a presentation in that specifically about our wastewater plant capacity, and that reminds me that we should spend some time where I can go back through that with you. But we demonstrated to the community, the commission, where we are with capacity at a number of different growth rates, and we saw that we would have five years' worth of capacity at a growth rate of 20%. If we increased building permits and connections to our sewer system by 20% a year for the next five-year period, we would still have capacity at our wastewater plant. Now, we're in the planning processes. We're, the process to build a wastewater plant starts with planning. The state of Florida requires you to do that, so we're doing, we're developing our planning report right now. Next would be design. The planning should be through by, towards the end of 2021, and then we're going to ask the commission to fund in its budget and move forward in design. We'll spend some real money there, and the design will take about another year, and then construction would take 18 months to two years to complete a treatment plant. So we currently are on track to complete expansion of a wastewater plant in less than five years. So we couldn't handle all 900 homes and all 500 homes from some of the other developments if they all came in tomorrow, but even at a growth rate of 20%, we've got capacity in our existing plant, and we don't issue... issue concurrency on a development until they bring in a plat for consideration. So this developer is aware that they'll get zoning rights for 900 homes, and they will be allowed to build some of those homes as long as we have capacity at the time they want to submit for plat. Most people are coming in for plats for 30 to 50 lots at a time. Every time one of those plats comes in, we evaluate exactly where we are with concurrency. We report that to the commission, and we tell them, you know, where we stand, and if they approve this, where we will stand after that. So we have lots of protocols in place to make sure that we don't get ourselves in a pinch. The State of Florida requires us on our wastewater plant to do that, to monitor concurrency and capacity, available capacity. So we have capacity for this treatment, I mean, for this development, as long as they develop at a speed at which we anticipate. But specifically, with every plat they bring in, we will specifically say we can handle 50 more homes or not.
And just to reiterate again, you know, that's why we can't, when someone comes in, they complain about the connection charge, we can't waive that because we bonded that money. That's what's paying for these upgrades. And it's why, even with a 20% growth rate, which is double our 30-year history growth rate on an annual basis, why we still have capacity, because we fought those battles, and we said, this is the right thing to do. We have this connection charge. The people who are building houses need to pay for their capacity, and if other entities around the county took that stance, then they wouldn't be in the positions that they're in as well. But you guys have fought those battles, right? And you've said this is the right way to go, and that's why we're in good shape right now, because decisions out of commissions 30 years ago made and that you guys have upheld. Other questions from this board?
I have one question.
Okay, now's the time. We're here. Do it.
Jerry, have a question. Did you make any progress with regards to trying to realign with the existing blinking light you had mentioned, potentially trying to swap out the retention pond that's currently there, and maybe trying to reroute to sync up with the flashing light?
Yes, we are continuing to make progress with that. We recently, I think it was last Thursday, we got a letter from FDOT and their right-of-way department, because it would involve a trade, and we know that those take a long time. So that's continuing to matriculate on through the process. Yeah.
I'll stay up.
Other questions?
I'll stay up here.
Other questions from the board? Hearing none? Okay, would the applicant like to make a final argument? You don't have to.
I don't want to argue.
Wendy, would you like to make a final argument? All right, wonderful. Mr. Attorney, would you please advise decision-making body?
Substantial incompetent evidence, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. We'll now enter into deliberations. If there are no deliberations, we'll entertain a motion to approve. Approve with conditions continue or deny.
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Martin to approve, a second by Commissioner Coleman to approve. Any questions or comments on the motion on the floor from the dice? Seeing none, do we have any questions from the public on the motion on the floor? Seeing none, we'll come back. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Just checking, wanted to make sure. Couldn't hear, man, I'm getting old. All right, Mr. Attorney, would you please read the ordinance, that motion passed unanimously? Would you please read the ordinance 2021-07?
Glad to do so, Mr. Mayor. I'll read this by title only, and as we've stated in the procedure that you just mentioned, this is the companion ordinance. It runs along with the conference plan map change, and now we're changing the zoning. So this is the partner ordinance, and staff's report is going to be into the record, so we don't need a lot of additional information to go into the record on this. We already have it all. This is ordinance number 2021-07, LDR 21-05, an ordinance of the City of Newberry, Florida, relating to the rezoning of approximately 289 contiguous acres, more or less pursuant to an application by the property owner of said acreage. Amending the official zoning atlas of the City of Newberry Land Development Regulations, providing for the rezoning from agricultural, A, zoning district to planned development, E, zoning district on certain lands within the corporate limits of the City of Newberry, Florida, tax parcels number 01927-000-000, 01932-000-000, and 01933-002-000, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, and providing an effective date. The appropriate motion is to pass ordinance number 2021-07 as read by title only.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any ex parte on this ordinance? Commissioner Coleman?
No.
Commissioner Clark?
No.
Commissioner Farnsworth?
No.
Commissioner Martin?
No.
Commissioner Maison? Hearing none. Okay, I'm going to go right to a motion. I have a motion to approve. Approve with conditions continue. I have a motion to approve, Commissioner Martin, and a second from Commissioner Maison. Any comments or questions on the motion on the floor from the dice? Seeing none, do we have any public comments on the motion on the floor? Seeing none, we'll come back. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Now, item number nine is a standalone quasi judicial, so we're going to go through the process one more time.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, gentlemen. Drive safe.
Y'all know Mary Jane, yes?
I believe.
Mary Jane James?
No.
Didn't you come, she came before me earlier?
I've been to one, yes.
Yes, yes.
She is representing the sellers, and I'm going to pry off the door frame of the house because it's got a little mark from when she was like six years old, eight years old, nine years old, 10 years old.
That's cool. You should take that door.
And just wanted to thank you real briefly, and I'm squeezing over the next time. It was really great to work with staff. Mr. New said, you got to go out and see the family house that's out there, and so Ryan and I went out there, and granted, some of the doorways hit me in the head, so we're going to have to look.
Probably happens to you a lot, though.
True. We're going to have to look at adaptive reuse, but her grandparents built effectively a fortress out there, and I know that she's working to get it designated as a historic place. It's going to require, you know, adaptive reuse on that, but it's going to be a real cool thing to have that. I mean, the house is built like a fortress.
Well, I've been hearing about it. I need a tour.
Yeah. Yeah. It started with, yeah, it started with Mr. New.
No, no fee.
Pizza afterwards. Thank you all.
All right. Well, thank you for coming and sitting and listening to all of this as well. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Farnsworth?
I'll just say that I do remember Mama Gray living out there and visiting her on those numerous occasions.
All right. I think you should have disclosed that during ex parte, you know?
Terrorizing.
Yeah, terrorizing, yeah. Okay, we're going to move on to item number nine. Thank you, guys, for coming. And Mr. Attorney, would you please read the ordinance 2021-24 into the record for us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is ordinance 2020-24, an ordinance of the City of Newberry, Florida, annexing certain portions of unincorporated Lasher County. That includes tax parcel numbers 01861-001 and, dash, 001. Tax parcel number 01861-001-000 and 1858-000-000, as more specifically described in this ordinance, as petitioned for by the property owners pursuant to Section 171.044 of the Florida statutes, making certain findings, providing for land use, zoning, and land development regulations and enforcement of same, providing directions to the clerk of the commission, providing for a severability clause, and providing for an immediate effective date. Appropriate motion is passed, ordinance 2020-24, as read by title only.
Thank you, sir.
Sir.
Ex parte, Commissioner Coleman?
No.
Commissioner Clark?
No.
Commissioner Farnsworth?
No.
Commissioner Martin?
No.
Commissioner Maison?
No.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Ms. Wendy, you going to give us the overview on this?
This is the first reading of an ordinance to annex property into the City of Newberry. This location, the property is on the, is at the east side of Northwest 202nd Street, and it's 239 acres, consisting of three parcels. You can see that it's south of the Gatorback Cycle Park. Essentially, the ordinance deals with the annexation of those parcels, and the proposed annexation would serve to strengthen contiguity and improve the overall compactness of the municipal boundary. So it is between, if you go back and look at that map, it's between the, you see those grayed-out areas? Those are city properties. So this is an unincorporated area, kind of in that little alcove between those grayed areas, so it would help to bring that compactness together, so that you would have, not have that unincorporated area in between those areas and kind of close that up. So the Florida statutes requires that the proposed annexation be posted. All the public notice has been done. The county has been notified, and the county's growth management department have also, has also been notified. To date, we have not received any comments or anything. The recommendation is for approval of ordinance 2021-24 on first reading and to establish June 14th as the date of enactment hearing. And that's the conclusion of staff's recommendation and report.
Okay, Ms. Wendy is the applicant here?
I'm sorry, I had my orientation wrong on this property. I've not talked with the petitioner as far as ex parte, I have not talked to a petitioner. I've only talked to the gentleman that is in discussions with this property owner about what to do with the property, but I don't even know where that relationship is at this point, so it's not going to affect my judgment or having it come into the city at all, but I did want to clarify.
From a historical perspective, there are a lot of proud Finland, families from Finland in this area. Just, just so everybody knows that.
Okay, and you hit all the appropriate points for the ex parte. Okay, staff, the applicant is not here, and staff has already given the recommendation. I've not been contacted by a third-party intervenor, so we're going to move to public comment. Anybody from the public have three minutes to talk? Okay, that'll take us right down to, I'm going to assume staff doesn't want to cross-examine themselves. Member decision-making body, would you like to ask any questions of staff?
Just quiet, it's just another wrong place. It'll soak it up.
Absolutely. I agree. Okay, nothing? Okay, Ms. Wendy, you want to make a final argument? All right, thank you, ma'am. Mr. Attorney, would you please advise decision-making body?
Substantial incompetent evidence, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. We'll enter into deliberations. If there are no deliberations, we'll have a motion to approve. Approve with conditions continue or deny.
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Clark, I have a second from Commissioner Coleman to approve. Are there any questions or comments on the motion on the floor from the dice? Hearing none, is there any comments, questions from the public on the motion on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Now, items 10 through 15 are companion quasi judicials, so we're going to go through it first. We'll get our presentation on the first one. After the first one, I'll ask for ex parte, and then we'll just do a motion on that one, okay? So for item 10, which is the first of our five companion quasi judicials, Mr. Attorney, would you please read the ordinance into the record, 2021-17?
An ordinance of the City of Newberry, Florida, amending ordinance number 4-91 is amended relating to an amendment to the future land use plan map of the City of Newberry Conference Plan under the expedited amendment procedures established in Sections 163.31842 and 3 of the Florida statutes and in conformance with Sections 163.3161 through 163.3215 of the Florida statutes, providing for a change in future land use classification from Lasher County Rural Agriculture less than or equal to one dwelling unit per five acres to City of Newberry Agricultural less than or equal to one dwelling unit per five acres on certain lands within the corporate limits of the City of Newberry, Florida, which have been annexed thereto. Tax parcel number 02610-000-000, consisting of approximately 19.4 contiguous acres, providing for severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, and providing an effective date. The appropriate motion is to pass, ordinance number 2021-17, as read by title only.
Thank you, sir. Ex parte for this. Thank you, sir. Ex parte for this. Commissioner Coleman?
No.
Commissioner Clark?
No.
Farnsworth?
No.
Martin?
No.
Maison? All right, and Ms. Wendy, you going to take us through? Is the applicant here on any of these five?
We have one, Mr. Richardson is here for the application. I think that's the first one that we're going to.
Okay, all right.
But what I'm going to do is present all of the applications, all three conference of plan amendments, three rezonies at one time, and then when you read each title for each ordinance, and go through each one, you can make your motions on each one after that. So you'll have all the recommendations, all the one lines you can see. So in this case, we've got an application on this first process. We go through the future land use amendment, just like we did on that other one that we did on the retirement community property. So in this case, this is the first public hearing on these items. So these are properties that were recently annexed into the city, and so now we're going through the process of changing the future land use map, and then we'll change the zoning to implement that future land use category. So this, these are the first three items. There are the conference of plan amendment changes, and you see that there are three different locations. That's why they all have their separate ordinances. So they're all, Scott has got the cities. So this first one, Mr. Richardson is here for, the parcel is 19.4 acres. You see that it's located on the east side of Southwest 250th Street, 250th Street, approximately 0.16 miles south of Southwest 36th Avenue. It is a request to go from the Alachia County Rural Agriculture Conference of Future Land Use Category to the City of Newberry Agriculture Category. All of these have a bad change in land use. This one is the next parcel, going from County City Agriculture Designations to the future land use. This property is on the north side of Southwest 15th Avenue, approximately four miles east of Southwest 222nd Street. Two parcels of land, making up 13.7 acres. The third item, moving to future land use, is an 80.87 acre parcel of land that's approximately
Okay, thank you. Ms. Wendy, would the applicant like to say anything with the presentation? All right, thank you, sir. Again, I've not been contacted by anybody wishing to claim third-party intervenor status. That's going to move us to public comment. Anybody from the public want to talk? You have three minutes to do so. Seeing none, we'll go, we're going to skip cross-examination, I assume? Yes, staff doesn't want to cross-examine herself. Members of the decision-making body, do you have any questions for staff on these annexations? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Wendy, would you like to make a final argument? Would the applicant like to make a final argument? Okay, Mr. Attorney?
Substantial incompetent.
Thank you, sir. Now enter into deliberations. If there are no deliberations, we'll have a motion to approve. Approve with conditions continue or deny.
So moved.
I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Martin, a second from Commissioner Maison. Any comments or questions on the motion on the floor from the dice?
Thank you.
We will. We got two people making notes back there. No questions from the dice? Any questions from the members of the public? Hearing none, we'll come back to dice. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Scott, would you please read ordinance 2021-20 on first reading for us?
An ordinance of the City of Newberry, Florida, relating to the amendment of official zoning atlas for the rezoning of less than 5% of the total land area of the city pursuant to an application by the City of Newberry, amending the official zoning atlas of the City of Newberry Land Development Regulations, providing for rezoning Newberry Land Development Regulations, providing for rezoning from Alachua County Agricultural A zoning district to the City of Newberry Agricultural A zoning district on certain lands within the corporate limits of the City of Newberry, Florida which have been annexed thereto. Tax parcel number 02610-000-000 consisting of approximately 19.4 contiguous acres, providing severability and repealing all ordinances in conflict, and providing an effective date. Appropriate motion is to pass, ordinance number 2021 dash 20 as read by title only.
Thank you, sir. Let's do ex parte, Commissioner Coleman? Commissioner Clark? Commissioner Farnsworth? Commissioner Martin? Commissioner Maison? I have none as well. Do I have a motion to continue, approve, continue, deny, amend? I got them all in there.
Motion to approve.
I got a motion to approve from Commissioner Clark, a second from Commissioner Martin. Any comments, questions on the motion on the floor from the dice? Any public comments on the motion on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We're going to move on to ordinance 2021 dash 18, Scott.
An ordinance of the City of Newberry, Florida amending ordinance number 4 dash 91 is amended relating to an amendment of the future land use plan map of the City of Newberry Conference of Plan under the expedited amendment procedures established in sections 163.31842 and 3 of the Florida statutes and in conformance with sections 163.3161 through 163.3215 of the Florida statutes, providing for a change in future land use classification from Alachua County Rural Agriculture less than or equal to one dwelling unit per five acres to City of Newberry Agriculture less than or equal to one dwelling unit per five acres on certain lands within the corporate limits of the City of Newberry, Florida which have been annexed thereto. Tax parcels number 01926-005-000 and 01926-010-015 consisting of approximately 13.7 contiguous acres, providing severability and repealing all ordinances in conflict and providing an effective date. Appropriate motion is to pass, ordinance number 2021 dash 18 as read by title only.
Thank you, sir. Let's do ex parte for this, Commissioner Coleman? Clark? Farnsworth? Martin? Maison? Do I hear a motion to approve, prove conditions continue or deny?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Coleman?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Martin. Any comments, questions on the motion on the floor from the dice? Do you have any public comments, questions on the motion on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to first reading of ordinance 2021 dash 21.
An ordinance of the City of Newberry, Florida relating to the amendment of the official zoning atlas for the rezoning of less than 5% of the total land area of the city pursuant to an application by the City of Newberry, amending the official zoning atlas of the City of Newberry Land Development Regulations, providing for rezoning from Alachua County Agricultural A zoning district to City of Newberry Agricultural A zoning district on certain lands within the corporate limits of the City of Newberry, Florida which have been annexed thereto. Tax parcels number 01926-005-000 and 01926-010-015 consisting of approximately 13.7 contiguous acres, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, and providing an effective date. Appropriate motion is to pass, ordinance number 2021 dash 21 as read by title only.
Thank you, sir. Ex parte, Ricky? Mark? Monty? Tim? Tony? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve, prove conditions continue or deny?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Clark and a second from Commissioner Maison. Are there any comments, questions on the motion on the floor from the dice? None, are there any public comments or questions on the motion on the floor? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion passes unanimously. Scott, would you please read on first reading, ordinance 2021 dash 19?
An ordinance of the City of Newberry, Florida amending ordinance number 4 dash 91 is amended relating to the amendment of the future land use plan map of the City of Newberry Conference of Plan under the expedited amendment procedures established in sections 163.31842 and 3 of the Florida statutes and in conformance with sections 163.3161 through 163.3215 of the Florida statutes, providing for a change in future land use classification from Alachua County Rural Agriculture less than or equal to one dwelling unit per five acres to City of Newberry Agriculture less than or equal to one dwelling unit per five acres on certain lands within the corporate limits of the City of Newberry, Florida which have been annexed thereto. Tax parcel number 04270-000-000 consisting of approximately 80.87 acres, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, and providing an effective date. Appropriate motion is to pass, ordinance number 2021 dash 19 as read by title only.
Thank you, sir. Ex parte, Commissioner Coleman? Commissioner Clark? Commissioner Farnsworth? Commissioner Martin? Commissioner Maison? Do I hear a motion to approve, prove conditions continue or deny?
Approve.
I have a motion from Commissioner Farnsworth to approve?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Clark. Any comments, questions on the motion on the floor from the dice? Any public comments, questions on the motion on the floor? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion passes unanimously. Scott, would you please read on first reading, ordinance 2021 dash 22 into the record.
An ordinance of the City of Newberry, Florida relating to the amendment of the official zoning atlas for the rezoning of less than 5% of the total land area of the city pursuant to an application by the City of Newberry, amending the official zoning atlas of the City of Newberry Land Development Regulations, providing for rezoning from Alachua County Agriculture A zoning district to the City of Newberry Agricultural A zoning district on certain lands within the corporate limits of the City of Newberry, Florida which have been annexed thereto. Tax parcel number 04270-000-000 consisting of approximately 80.87 acres, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, and providing an effective date. Appropriate motion is to pass, ordinance number 2021 dash 22 as read by title only.
Thank you, sir. Ex parte, Coleman? Clark? Farnsworth? Martin? Maison? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve, prove conditions continue or deny?
Motion to approve it.
Motion from Commissioner Maison, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Farnsworth. Any comments, questions on the dice from the motion on the floor? Any public comments, questions on the motion on the floor? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion passes unanimously. And that is the way, gentlemen, you do eight quasi-judicials in one night, right there. Only took it four years to get here, but now we're here, we've arrived. And with that, Mike, please lead us through a conversation about a petition to vacate a portion of Southwest Second Avenue between Northwest 254th Street and Seaboard Coastline Railroad.
Mr. Mayor, you know that I probably can't do one item as quickly as the board just did eight, but whoa, okay, there we go. So second street vacation request tonight, this is first reading, this is on the west side of the CSX railroad, but it's a similar situation. This application came from the two adjacent property owners, one is Pat Post and the other is William Watson. They are proposing to vacate Northwest Second Avenue, just a little bit north here of City Hall, from 254th Street east of the CSX right of way. You'll recall there used to be a railroad crossing there, and about eight years ago, CSX closed it, and they put up those barricades. So about two years ago, we just took out the asphalt, put in dirt, now it's just a grassed area. We do have utility infrastructure in there, we have some overhead electric that will remain, so if the commission agrees with staff's recommendation to vacate the roadway segment through there, we would retain a utility easement. So there's the road segment, goes right up to the railroad crossing, and there's a barricade there that CSX put up, and staff sees no reason to maintain it. We don't think that there's any, any public benefit to maintaining the roadway segment, of course, like I said, there is benefit to maintaining the utility easement through there. And I'm available for any questions that the commission has. This is first reading, and staff recommends approval.
Commission, do you have any questions before I ask Scott to read the ordinance into the record? Commissioner Farnsworth?
What if CSX decides to remove the barrier?
Well, if, if CSX agreed to remove the barrier, then, then if we vacate the roadway segment, that we would not be able to use it unless we were able to capture it again, which could be reason for the commission to consider not returning it, although I would tell you that it would violate CSX's standards. CSX's standards are they want these road crossings no less frequently than every half-mile in an urbanized area, so they have one at State Road 26, and they have one at Northwest First, which will also be State Road 26 in five years, and it would violate their standards to open this one up again. Not to say that they wouldn't, but that's how they operate.
Sorry, a lot of the railroads have gone away. There's always possibility that it could happen to that one too, and we wouldn't have a roadway there if, if that did happen, right?
Correct. If CSX vacates that, if that road, if that rail stops being used, and then it eventually would, CSX decides to abandon it and get rid of it, similar to what they're doing with the spur to High Springs, so that, that leg between Newberry and High Springs, it's, you know, it's 10-mile segment, they maintain three miles of it for car storage today, and there's tracks there, but starting at Northwest 46th and going all the way to High Springs, they removed those tracks, and that property, they're, they're trying to negotiate a deal with Alachua County to turn it into a rails for trails program. So it, yeah, on the, on the outside, and, and they did abandon the leg going to Trenton as well, so where the, that, that whole stretch between, near Lewis Four Park, that's all abandoned CSX right of way.
Any other questions? Scott, would you read the ordinance into the record for us, please?
I'd do so, Mr. Mayor, this is ordinance 2021 dash 25, an ordinance of the City of Newberry, Florida vacating a portion of Northwest Second Avenue between Seaboard Coastline Railroad and Northwest 254th Street, reserving said right-of-way limits as an easement for existing or proposed public utilities, repealing all ordinances in conflict and providing an effective date. Appropriate motion is to pass, ordinance number 2021 dash 25 is read by title only.
Thank you, sir. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Martin, a second from Commissioner Coleman. Any final comments or questions on the motion on the floor?
I don't think we should release that piece of property, since there is a possibility that in the future, we could reopen that roadway.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on the motion on the floor?
So.
Commissioner Maison?
So if they do, like just say what Forest says, and we do make it like a trails rails or whatever it is, and we don't pass this, we can put a road across that real trail?
Mr. Mayor, we, we, it is on. Okay. There it is. It says it's on, it's green. Mr. Mayor, I anticipate that there would be no reason why we couldn't, it might be a negotiation process, depending on what type of rights we got, but I would doubt very seriously that anyone would try to prevent us from obtaining a road crossing there. I, I would, you know, I would point out that there's one, a mere block away would probably be, you know, something that would weigh into the decision about level of importance on it, but this would be a local street, and First Avenue will not be a local street in some years to come, it will be a state highway.
Okay, Commissioner Clark?
Mike, or Mr. Mayor, was this on Second Avenue, are we going to need this to cross anything coming out of an east-west road? If, to get across there, that can ever be opened as a roadway? If we give this to Pat and Mr. Watson, they're going to split the land like the other one?
Correct.
So is there any form, function, or anything to need that on Second Avenue?
From staff's perspective, no, there is no public benefit. That's not to say that per Commissioner Farnsworth's thought, if CSX abandons the railroad in town and pulls up their tracks, and so we never, we're no longer a railroad town, it's not outside of the city's realm to try to make that connectivity go back through there. I'd also note that, you know, on the south side of State Road 26, it's, it's entirely, it's 15 blocks that we don't have connectivity, and, you know, we get along just fine without that. I think on the north side, if we don't have this one, the next one will be Sixth or Seventh, which is the road that Martin Luther King's on, you just have to, you know, you'd have to go down a few more blocks, and because of the way that triangle piece in there that is just immediately north of what you can see right there where the three-way is, there, there's no roadway connectivity through there, so all those roads come back to 255th, they're just to the west, they cross there and go to the community center, Martin Luther King Community Center. But valid point that the commissioner brings up, I, you know, I certainly wouldn't try to persuade the commission to do something if they feel like that we need to preserve our ability to, to make that crossing at some point in the future.
I've heard one, one commissioner. What's that?
We have a motion on the floor.
We have a motion, probably second on the floor, to approve. Okay. We'll call the questions, and still have public comment, any public comment before we go to the vote? Hearing none, Commissioner Coleman?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Farnsworth? Commissioner Martin? Commissioner Maison? Motion passes four to one, Commissioner Farnsworth and dissent. We, ladies and gentlemen, if you have forgotten, we pulled item 17 simply because the sheriff has not had the opportunity to sign the contract on his end, so that's going to move new item 17 as the fiscal year 2022 budget calendar. Mike, you taking us through the budget calendar?
I am, Mr. Mayor.
We went from all Wednesdays to almost all Tuesdays.
Correct. This is, this is the overall budget calendar for everybody, and explains in, in great detail all the things that we hit as a staff. Specifically tonight, we seek direction from the commission on, on the four regularly scheduled workshops, and staff is always mindful that four can turn into five or six, and we're happy to do that. If the commission needs more information, we're, we're right here for you. So we went from all Wednesdays to three Tuesdays and a Wednesday, and we are proposing a start time of 6:00 PM. You know, I, I think that the commission has expressed maybe 7:00 PM, so we just want to let you know that while we propose six, if the commission would prefer to meet at seven, we're happy to do that as well.
Just for, I know Commissioner Clark has gone through this process one time, this will be your first, it's, it's pretty rare that every commissioner makes it to every single workshop, it just, you know, vacate, it's a vacation time, you know, taking families away, that kind of thing. We record them all, and certainly the manager and I will sit down with anybody who misses one recap, you can always watch the recording as well, and at these workshops, the whole, no votes are taken at workshops, workshops are all conversations. So the idea is at the workshop, staff listens to our conversation, they put what it seems like is the consensus of the board into the budget, and then they break back and they say, okay, here's what, here's what everybody thought throughout the whole process. So that, all that being said, if we're looking at any of these dates and three or four of you say, hey, I'm, I'm out of the country on one of those dates, then it'd be helpful for staff to know, I know I'm out of the country on the July 20th date, so I won't be at that one. You're out on the July 20th date. Where are you going? It's a farm conference? Oh, yeah, it's you, you're going together, uh-huh, well, we'll get to that in the comments. Okay, so anybody else have, Commissioner Maison?
Well, if it's going to be six, most likely we won't make any of those, so. But if we don't have to go to them, you guys are cool with that.
No, you can't, we don't need you to miss all of them. Seven o'clock is good.
Seven o'clock would be good for, better for me.
Seven o'clock is usually better for me as well, I mean, I can make six. Some of these can run a little long, we'll start feeling about seven o'clock.
Whatever makes, whatever we do. I guess we can accommodate Mr. Maison.
Commissioner Maison.
Yeah, we all want.
We can take. Hey, we can pick out something during November and December, he's going to say the same thing, I can't make it.
This guy, I'll make sure I keep his packages on the truck, and I will make it.
You don't get any of his packages then. I'm good with whatever you guys do.
Shifting the time to seven o'clock, any other dates? We'll shift the time to seven across the board, any other dates, jump out, maybe we could work on that July 20th. I'm not sure how long the clerk will be gone. I'm gone for like a 12-day period of time, but y'all can certainly listen to a workshop without me, you don't need me.
Would July the 27th would be bad because that pushes up against August?
I would just leave it at July 20th for now. The, the workshop needs to be these, the five commissioners here having a conversation. The, the workshop needs to be these, the five Commissioners here having a conversation. The clerk and I will, will catch up. And I'm not hearing anybody else throw out another date as a, as an absolute can't happen. Anything else on this agenda, Mike, or is, are these four dates?
These four dates are fine, and, uh, Mr. Mayor, we will send meeting invitations to each Commissioner, so they'll be on your phone. You won't have to remember, they'll be right there on your phone.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. And that brings us to comments. Commissioner, uh, our, uh, City Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanna just start off by, by mentioning to the Commission, because, uh, we are recommending approval on, um, developments that we bring before you, whatever development agreements tonight. We listen, um, to the Commission and the Commission's ask of us. So we're aware of a lot of concerns. I'd say the, the four or five last new projects that have come in to us on State Road 26, we've just advised that they won't hit an agenda until after the community visioning session is over, to give the Commission a chance to, uh, listen to the community and decide what they wanna do. So we've got three or four applications, maybe five applications, just in a holding pattern, and they're all participating in the community vision. When I say that, they are listening. They're not steering. They're just listening to what residents want to help them formulate their game plan and their pitch to you. We're also telling them that we anticipate that we're gonna walk out of that with some sort of an overlay district, which would be a higher standard. And to date, all have applauded that, and said that's what they want. They want a well-planned corridor. So just wanted to point out that we, we do tell people, uh, we, we'll share bad news with them, we share what the, what we understand the Commission's vision to be. We have shared extensively about, we need to see a good amount of commercial, non-residential, that, that, we hear that at every, um, application that is before you. And from, I take it that a lot of these developers is professional, especially the professional developers, um, that they know what they're talking about when they say you can't have too much. And so not being an expert in that area, I, I don't, I don't try to say what is the right amount. I just, I just believe them when they say you can't have too much, and you need to look at all that you have that is zoned non-residential when you're considering whether we're proposing 10 acres or 12 acres. So we've had extensive conversations with them about that. We've had extensive conversations about school board concerns. We've had extensive conversations about mining operations out on that State Road 26 corridor and how it may negatively affect residential development. And just wanted to assure you guys, you don't always hear that whenever these applications are in front of you, but that's the conversation we're having with those development groups when they come in. Mr. Mayor, on a, uh, another, uh, item, the, back in November, when the county had, um, charter amendments for consideration, we were very focused on growth management areas, uh, which passed by the slimmest of margin. Another one that was on there that we potentially saw as problematic, uh, was a county-wide natural resources protection ordinance. So, um, county staff has got that ordinance pulled together. It's gonna be considered tomorrow morning. It's vague enough that we can't see, see how it might negatively affect Newberry, but one of their target areas is limiting development in car-sensitive regions. And I would tell you, everything west of 34th Street and, and Gainesville is considered car-sensitive. So this seems to be another opportunity for the county to try to somehow, um, inject themselves into development. What, it's not just Newberry, western Alachua County. That'd be Alachua, High Springs, us, Archer, if they ever get a wastewater system, we'll be, we're all very car-sensitive, so that may be coming down the pipes. It's, the hearing is tomorrow morning. If you wanna, uh, utilize your, your, um, your, um, right to voice opposition, please feel free to do so, although I don't have high hopes that the BSCC's really listening to re-oppose that.
Mike, before you move on, car sensitivity is regulated at the state level, EBA?
It absolutely is. We, um, the Water Management District is typically monitored by Water Management District, um, through stormwater retention permitting, through groundwater, um, well, every time we get a permit, we have to get a, I mean, every time we wanna put a well in, we have to get a permit from the Water Management District. That's where car sensitivity comes in. Sensitive, uh, car-sensitive areas can be direct conduits between pollution at ground level and groundwater. And, you know, I say all the time, nobody, I, I mean, that even though Newberry is very pro-development, we're all environmentalists. We all love the great outdoors, and we wanna preserve it and not pollute it. It's just a different philosophy about what would result in pollution and what would not, and we think that would, would smart, uh, that we think the state does a fine job of protecting the environment and the aquifer. Mr. Mayor, we have a meeting scheduled tomorrow morning with Representative Kat Kamik, um, here at Little Red Schoolhouse. Her team called for the meeting. Uh, topics for discussion are gonna be, um, support for AgTech Park. She thinks there may be some ways that she can support us. USDA has announced a new composting pilot program, uh, that we're gonna apply for, see if we can get some funding for a compost facility that'll be part of our wastewater plan expansion. And Congress has approved earmarks, um, which tend to be, um, you know, not a popular buzz phrase, uh, but they hadn't been allowed to do them for years. That's whenever you just get money back to your district. If Congress is going to have them, then we're gonna advocate that some of those monies come back to, if we're paying the taxes, we'd like to get the, reap the benefits of those taxes, and we support when Congress doesn't do earmarks. But they're allowed to do them now, and we're gonna ask for those. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I also like to point out that, like we do every year, City Hall will be closed for, on Monday in recognition of Memorial Day. So, and we are planning to have our flag display up, that, but staff won't be here, and we wish our residents a, a, a nice holiday, and hope everybody will keep in mind what Memorial Day is all, all about. We, we certainly will as staff. Last but not least, Mr. Mayor, um, our community visioning forum that was postponed in early May has been rescheduled for June the 26th. I believe you all have a meeting invite. That's the live, uh, community visioning session out at Easton. It'll be on a Saturday. It's gonna start at 9:00 AM and gonna conclude sometime between noon and 1:00 PM. I thought that the first one, which was online, uh, I had high hopes, and it exceeded my expectations. It was a really good forum, uh, and it got really good input. And the, um, our facilitator has asked that, if possible, elected officials, uh, attend, sit in the back of the room and listen. She thinks that it makes for a better experience for residents that attend, to know that elected officials are actually listening. Um, and so, um, she's, she's asked that we extend that invitation to you all. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Turney?
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to let you and the Commission know that we're losing Rich. He's, uh, gotten an opportunity through a law firm named Sandberg Phoenix. It's a 150-person law firm. They've thrown a bunch of resources at him and said, come be the coordinator of all of the, the litigation here in the state of Florida. And so it's a tremendous opportunity for him and his family, but I hate it. And I, I've always said, you know, Rich was our friend before this happened. He'll be our friend afterwards. I don't wanna be a hundred, uh, one cog in a 150-person law firm. That's just not what I want. But he wants this opportunity, so I'm happy for him. Uh, one of the things that I think it was Commissioner Martin put on our evaluation forum, what's your succession plan? And my succession plan just got a big curveball thrown at me. So, you know, but there's young lawyers that we have in the firm, and there's other people we're gonna do some shifting around of our utility infielders, gonna go to second base now, or, you know, we, we can do some things, and we do have some young people that, that, um, are with us right now. One will need to pass the bar come July. She'll be doing that. She'll find out her results. And so there's opportunities that are there, and I think we've got a good group of young folks, and we'll miss Rich, you know, but I, he wanted me specifically to tell you, he appreciated each and every one of you and the relationships that he's made, and he'll miss this part of his job. But, um, and it's somewhere along the way, he'll come in and do this himself and talk to y'all, but, but I did wanna let you know right quick that, uh, we did get this curveball, and, uh, but we'll deal with it, and we'll go forward, so. Say it again? Yes, I think so.
Well, please, Barcelona Rich, how much we'll miss him, and we hope he's able to make it the one last time, you know, but if he can't, we understand that as well, so.
I'll tell him that.
Madam Clerk?
I don't have anything. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Coleman? Commissioner Clark?
I'd like to fly for Rich's job. Put it in. Is that an Esquire position, or is it, I just have?
He just... Yeah. Commissioner Farnsworth?
Yeah, I have a few things.
All right.
Uh, first of all, can we get, uh, the maps, put it in our packets, from the, all that stuff? Uh, so, yeah. And, uh, can we, uh, set up a meeting with the Planning and Zoning Board to start working on the LDRs?
Um, I, I think the answer to the first question is absolutely. Uh, the answer to the second question is that I believe that we're all waiting for the visioning session to be done, so that we have a more comprehensive view. The P and Z has made a lot of the same comments that you guys have made. I think staff is very, very aware that, at this point in our history, we're ready to take the LDRs up to the next level in certain areas. Uh, obviously, we, I don't know if you meant that literally, like, can the Commission go, 'cause there's sunshine violations there? But this board can certainly put it on an agenda and have that conversation before the visioning session, if you want. Our basic philosophy has been, well, we're paying some money, we're hearing from our residents, let's find out, do we want the LDRs across the whole city increased? Do we want in certain areas increased? You know, what is people's vision for the future? So I think, I think item number one coming out of the visioning session is gonna be, let's take what we heard from the residents, uh, and let's take what we've heard from this board, 'cause I, I think it's fairly unanimous on this board that it's time to take those LDRs to a little bit higher standard. And that, the way, when people, developers come to us, we're getting a little bit better product, because we got a lot that wanna come to us now, so we can hold them to a higher standard.
Right. I suppose we could get ahead of the curve, we'll then get something started before we get a bunch of development, developers in here.
Well, I think we are, yeah, I think we are ahead of the curve, and I think we are, as Mike just said, we are clearly telling anyone who comes new that, hey, we're not telling you can't come in front of the P and Z, but the answer's most likely gonna be no, until we get through the visioning. So if you wanna pay the money, and you wanna go through the process, but these guys have heard your comments, they've heard the P and Z, so any new development that comes to you, staff is already saying, uh, the Commission has already said that's too close to the mind. They don't want any more houses on there. The, the Commission's already said, we, we wanna wait till after the visioning session. I think we're also ahead on that higher standard of LDR, because some of these developers that we've been dealing with themselves want to build a better. So we're gonna take those plans, and we're gonna say, okay, these are what we, these are what the developers themselves said that's the standard they wanna develop, too. Now let's have a conversation about how high, how high do we want it? We think that's too high. So I think we are ahead of the game. We're not standing still waiting for it. But I, I think it's more appropriate to wait until we hear from the residents, 'cause that's exactly the kind of conversations that we had on the forums.
How many residents were participating?
There was 12. 12 at the last one.
About 5,000, just, uh...
Yeah. I did one the weekend, I did the one the weekend before in Deltona, which is a city of 92,000, and they had 17 people.
So I mean, you're getting...
So percentage-wise, we're killing it.
You're not really getting a good representation of what I'm saying. I mean, it's, it's good to have...
I agree with you, right. But if we, if we call a visioning for the town, and then we make visioning-like decisions before that process is over, I think it seems a little insincere. Why'd you ask us for our opinion?
I agree. And, uh, I guess the last thing I wanna say is that, um, it's come to my attention that there's, has been some work being done without permits being pulled by, uh, some contractors, and also by some developers and stuff. And I wanna know what our, um, process in, in dealing with that is.
Some Mike question.
Mr., um, Mr. Mayor, that, that happens from time to time. I can think of two non-residential, um, uh, instances where that occurred. We follow our code and the state code. When, when we're, when someone, when we become aware that someone has not pulled a building permit, we engage them, and we advise some other requirements to pull a building permit. And if they continue to work without that building permit, we would eventually red-tag them and, and cease all work. But, you know, our Commission has said, hey, we're a business-friendly community, and so that means that we don't start out with hammers, it means we start out with gloves, and that's exactly how we approach every one of these. I'm not familiar with any development, developers that have started work without permits, but, um, we, you know, it's not uncommon to see it in residential. People aren't aware. It is kinda surprising to see it in non-residential. Uh, but, you know, we are, we are a community that people still question whether they need building permits. We don't, we don't, uh, we don't question that, because the building, building code is not a local code. It's a state code, and we're required to enforce it. So we, we advise people of that. We can't ignore it. Uh, but we, we immediately address every instance that we become aware of, and we work with them to bring them into compliance.
So, um, I'm talking about contractors that are, that are well-aware of what, that they need to pull an ordinance, but they don't do it anyhow? Are they turned, is that, are they turned over to the state?
Mr. Mayor, to my knowledge, we haven't. I would say that if we have a repeat customer, that I would ask staff to notify the state, um, that, that that's a problem. But to my knowledge, all of our licensed contractors that have performed work without a license, um, were able to put some sort of a plausible, um, rationale in there, and it was enough to where we didn't want to, you know, try to, to become judge and jury for them. So, but I'd say if that same contractor did it twice, you know, if you do it once, shame on you. If you do it twice, shame on me. If they did it twice, we'd report them to the state, and, uh, and at that point, we're just turning it over to the state. There's really no engagement from us after that. We'll let the state board handle it the way the state board handles it.
Okay, so, why aren't they just turned over to the state automatically? I don't, I don't quite understand why someone is breaking the law, breaking our ordinances, we're not enforcing them, we're not, they're doing work that's not being inspected by the city. Why aren't they not being turned over to the state?
Mr. Mayor, I, I would say that, that they are being inspected. We ask them to, we require them to come into compliance. We have stopped short of turning people in at the state. Uh, it's not to say we always will, but the tenor I get from the Commission about how we're gonna treat development, and I consider building, uh, in our community part of development, is, is that we're going to exercise discretion, and we're gonna, we're going to work with people to bring them into compliance rather than, than have a hammer. And so, and if the Commission gives us different direction, and I, I would say that, you know, we have some latitude. If there's a repeat customer, then I, I don't think the Commission necessarily cares if we take a firmer, uh, response. But I could tell you that just in the last six months, I've had way more pushback on the perception that we've been too aggressive in bringing people to compliance than of the perception that we've not been, uh, aggressive enough. And if, like I said, if the Commission wants us to be more aggressive, uh, we, we know how, but that, that begins to change the public's perception of whether we're here to help them, or whether we're here to, um, somehow become just a, uh, you know, an over-regulatory, unfriendly government. And, and it's a difficult balance for us.
I understand.
Just a time to drop some name and get it on the...
No, I mean, I would say if there's a specific incidence that you're talking about, Commissioner Farnsworth, let's, let's sit behind the door and see if we, see if there's a backstory there. If there's, if it's something that we're not aware of, then we'll find out why we're not aware of it. If it's something that we are aware of, then we'll see. I can't, I could tell you that I don't, I can't think of one incident in forever where there wasn't a legitimately vague reading of some ordinance that gave somebody an argument to be made. Now, we may still end up disagreeing, but there was a, there was a, a sincere debate about, do I need to do this? Why do I need to do this? That kind of a thing. But you may be in possession of a different incident that I'm not aware of, so, but let's have that conversation, and then we'll sign, find out if there's something that we need to do about it.
And we're, we're objecting for equal treatment, too. So we try not to read into who it is... So we try not to read into who it is or play favorites. We, we treat everybody the same. We try to give you the benefit of the doubt and bring you into compliance.
Okay. Any other comments? Commissioner Farnsworth? Commissioner Martin?
I can't believe it got all the way to me before we congratulated our state championship baseball team. 7 o'clock Thursday at the football stadium, we are going to celebrate this and I am sure that we have some sort of event in the works to bring them in here formally.
June, first meeting in June. We're working, we're trying to make those arrangements now.
All right. Well, congratulations to Mike Spina and company on that.
Absolutely.
And also, as sort of a sisterly relationship with the town of Trenton, their girls softball team won their state championship as well.
Take the side, clear.
Commissioner Maison?
Hey, with the resign deal or the revisioning, is that RSVP? Or is it just?
It, we have asked for it to be RSVP. It will, it helps us plan our breakout groups, keeping them to class size, but I would assure you that we're not going to turn anybody away. The first visioning session, I think we had close to 40 people that had RSVP. Our facilitator thought 12 was a really good number for a community our size. We really did a great job getting the word out the first time. We're hoping that we can catch the same momentum the second time. So we appreciate your help. Once we start posting it on social media, if you will share it, you guys have a different friends group and frankly, you're more credible than I am. So if you, if you'll share it, your friends might, might actually show up. If I share it, I don't know that I'm going to get that kind of traction.
I, I would also say on, on the visioning, I mean, my perspective going to two different ones weekend to weekend, you know, seeing a city of almost 100,000 only pull 17 people and a city of almost 7,000, you know, pull 12. And also remember that no one knew that we were going to have that meeting that night until about 3:00 o'clock that day. We couldn't get confirmation. So I spent the whole morning having people ask me, is it on? Because our live session got canceled the night before. All right, so we kind of lost a little bit of momentum there. We had really built up and that we had the town kind of in de-gauge. So to lose that momentum is devastating, but hopefully we can get it back. So, you know, reiterate our congratulations to the baseball team. Hope everybody is able to come. I don't know the agenda for 7:00 on Thursday night, but I know there's going to be a lot of food and I think it's just a party. So just come and celebrate and, and have a good time. I meant to bring pens for everybody. I forgot. I apologize, but I'll make sure you all get them by, by Thursday, by Thursday. And it never fails, never fails. And then I want to say congratulations to our clerk. She got appointed to, I want to make sure I get this committee right here. She got appointed to the committee. That's why she's not going to be here on the July 20th, right? For the Utilities, Natural Resources and Public Works Committee down at the Florida League of Cities. So it's a great honor. We appreciate you applying. Good job. Congratulations. And I think we're going to try to bring the baseball team at our joint meeting, but I've just got a text that they've already got, the county has them scheduled to come for June 22nd to their chamber. But Chair Cornell says, hey, let's do both. So we'll figure it out, how to, how to make all those things happen. That's right. That's right. So I, there, I'm sure there may be something else once, once we have this celebration. I floated the idea of a parade. Seemed like that's what most folks in the town kind of want us to do is some, some parade. And I just want to give another shout out to our community. You know, the head coach at Chipley was talking with our head coach and they, you know, this would have been their second or third state title, right? He said after the last state title, it took them six months to raise the money to go out and get rings for all of the boys. And it took us with our community less than 30 minutes. Less than 30 minutes. As that speaks volumes to our community. So less than 30 minutes, all the money was donated, so. So, thank you guys. Thank everybody listening. That's a great tribute to our community. Public comment? You made it all the way through the night.
Quick comment. You were talking about 12 people doing it? There are a whole bunch of us, the 40, who wanted to go to the live one because frankly, a whole bunch of us are just really tired of Zoom stuff. So I think you'll probably see a really good, good attendance there.
I agree. Other public comment? You waited until the whole night. Hearing none, we are adjourned.